First off, thank you Commissioner Blackshear for coming to join us again on a Thursday evening. It's good to see you. The first item for us is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. The next item is the approval of the May 25th, 2023 minutes that were emailed out to us earlier. Do I have a motion to approve? Okay, motion second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries. Next item is the recognition of council members. And as you all know, you have the option to speak now or speak with the case that you're here about. But I will start with Council Lady Benedict.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for your service as always. I am talking about item 11. But first, I think there might be people here who had received notice about a development on Scott Avenue. Then they called about that and it was originally scheduled to be heard today. If there's anybody here for that, I've been trying to communicate out to the community that that case will not be heard at all this term. It will not be heard until, at a minimum, October. We will have community meetings in the community about that in sometime between mid-August and mid-September. So if you're here for that, please feel, please go home. It's not being heard today. And you will have input. I do want to hear from you. Okay, so I'm here to talk about item 11, the McAlpine SP. This was in front of you a couple of meetings ago. And some changes have been made as the result of the community's feedback. And so the planning department has made a lot of concessions on this. And I am very appreciative of that. We do still have one concern, and that is the same concern that we had before, which is an alleyway access on McAlpine Avenue. One of the concessions was originally made by the planning department, was to allow an ingress egress on Gallatin Pike, which is not normal. But that is something the community wanted and the planning department found a way to work that out with the developer. Unfortunately, there is still an ingress from McAlpine Avenue into the development. That is something the community would like to have removed. I'm supportive of the community in that. However, I do think that you might have to approve that based on what we're hearing from planning, what I'm hearing from planning, including all the way up to this afternoon. What I would ask is, you considered the case? And if you're able to remove that alley, if you feel like that's an acceptable condition, please do so. And then I seek your approval for it. However, if you feel that the alleyway needs to remain, then I would seek your approval for it. And I actually have been in touch with our council attorney today in regards to how things can be amended at council. What I would look to do, so I want the community to know this, is if you approve it with the alleyway as it's currently presented to you today, I would look to potentially amend that at council. And just to remind you of how that would happen, it says, the council office said you can amend an SP at council up to third reading. However, if the amendment contradicts a planning commission condition, then the bill will either become a disapproved bill or it will need to be re-referred to you if you choose to hear it. So I want you to walk away. I don't typically ask you to do anything unusual. So I would ask you that I don't think this is unusual, but I would ask you to please approve it and let us iron this out at council if you do end up approving it with the alleyway. The community is aware of that position of mine. And so with that, I seek your approval of the case today. I don't know if planning has any questions or if you want me to answer any questions or clarification or if you've heard me and that's good. Tell me.
I think we're good. When we hear the case, I don't know if you'll still be here, but...
I would love to still be here. I actually have a, I'm on the Budget and Finance Committee and we have a budget hearing. We are in the budget season. So we have a work session this afternoon to try to get the budget correct for the season, for the next fiscal year. Including the planning department's budget. So thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
That might have come off a little wrong. It's everybody, it's the police budget. It's every budget for the entire city. So, and I don't believe that there's anything specific in regards to the planning department. I should say that in today's work session.
I think we'll take it in stride, Commissioner. That's great. No, thank you. Thank you for your service on the budget.
Thank you.
That's a big, big lift. Thank you, thank you. Next, we have Councilman Swope.
Can you thank for your service?
Okay.
I'm good.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Drefel.
Thank you. I'll wait till...
Item is up? Okay, great. Okay, well then, with that, anybody else? No one we missed? Okay. Okay, well with that, we will move on to item E, which is the items for deferral and withdrawal.
Okay. We will begin by starting with our items for deferral and withdrawal. Starting on page three of your agenda, item number 1A, 2021 CP 006001 Bellevue Community Plan Amendment and the associated case, item 1B, 2021 SP 061001 Bend at Bellevue, Ariza SP. The recommendation on those is both to defer to the June 22nd Planning Commission meeting and Commissioner Blackshear is recused on both of those items. On page four of your agenda, item number 3, 2015 SP 069003 Shelby Woods East Nashville Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 22nd meeting. Item number 4A, 2017 SP 087004 The Hill Property SP Amendment and the associated case, item 4B, 2023 SP 016001 The Village at Autumn View. Staff recommendation on both of those items is defer to the June 22nd Planning Commission meeting. On page five of your agenda, item number 6, 2023 SP 019001 The Meadows. Staff recommendation is defer to the June 22nd meeting. Item number 8, 2023 SP 040001 4057 Maxwell Road Residential SP. Staff recommendation is defer to the June 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Item number 10, 2023 SP 043001 Nolan'sville Pike SP. Staff recommendation is defer to the June 22nd meeting. On page six of your agenda, item number 12, 2018 S 059003 Orchards Phase 3. Staff recommendation is defer to June 22nd. Item 13, 2018 S 059004 Orchards Phase 2. Staff recommendation defer to June 22nd. Item 14, 2019 S 039002 Payne Road Subdivision. Recommendation is defer to June 22nd. On page seven of your agenda, item number 18, 2023 S 026001 Martin Reserve Subdivision. Staff recommendation is defer to June 22nd. Item number 19, 2023 S 042001 St. Luke Presbyterian Church. Staff recommendation is defer to June 22nd. Item number 20, 2023 S 063001 Thornton Grove PUD Phase 4A. Staff recommendation is defer to June 22nd. Moving on to page eight of the agenda, item number 21, 2022 Z 109 PR 001. Staff recommendation is defer to June 22nd. Item 22, 2023 Z 037 PR 001. Recommendation is defer to June 22nd. Item number 24, 2023 CP 003004 Bordeaux White's Creek Haynes Trinity Community Plan Amendment. Recommendation is defer to June 22nd. On page nine of your agenda, item number 26, 2023 Z 003 TX 001 The DTC Bonus Height Program. Staff recommendation is defer to June 22nd. Item 27, 2014 SP 050002 4214 Central Pike Amendment. Staff recommendation is defer to June 22nd and Commissioner Blackshear is recused from that item. Item number 30, 2023 SP 051001 Bell Center Place. Staff recommendation is defer to June 22nd. On page 10 of your agenda, item number 32, 2023 SP 054001 Charlotte Pike Mixed Use Development. Staff recommendation is defer to June 22nd. Item number 34, 2023 SP 056001 Reserve at Harpeth Lake. Staff recommendation is defer to June 22nd and Commissioner Blackshear is recused from that item. On page 11 of the agenda, item number 36, 2023 SP 060001 Tulip Grove Road Lots 1 through 4. Staff recommendation is defer to June 22nd. Item 37, 2023 SP 062001 840 Young's Lane SP. Staff recommendation is defer to June 22nd. Item number 38, 2023 SP 065001 Misty Cape Cove. Staff recommendation is defer to June 22nd. On page 13 of your agenda, item number 44, 2023 Z 066 PR 001. Staff recommendation is defer to July 27th. And on page 14 of your agenda, item number 49, 2023 Z 054 PR 001. Staff recommendation is defer to June 22nd.
Great, thank you so much. I'm going to read them back to you slowly so we make sure we have a good list. Items for deferral and withdrawal include item 1A, 1B. Item 3, item 4A, 4B. Item 6, 8, 10, 12, 13, 14, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 24, 26, 27, 30, 32, 34, 36, 37, 38, 44, and 49.
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioners, that is our items for deferral or withdrawal. Do I have a motion to approve? Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. So with that, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Okay, moving on to item F, the consent agenda. As noticed to our public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. I will go ahead and run through all the items on our consent agenda. If you are here in opposition, please raise your hand and that item will be placed on the agenda to be heard in the order that it is on the agenda. If there is no opposition present, it will be placed on the consent agenda. Okay, starting on page four of the agenda, item number 2, 2023 CP 00003 Major and Collector Street Plan Amendment for Calderwood Extension Removal. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? Seeing no one, that item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 5, 2022 SP 066001 114, 118 JC Napier. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. On page five of your agenda, item number 9, 2023 SP 042001 5043 Mountview Preliminary SP. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Moving on to page six of the agenda, item number 11, 2023 SP 047001 McAlpine SP. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? That item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 15, 2020 S 207003 Chandler Reserve. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? That item will be placed on the agenda to be heard. On page seven of your agenda, item number 16, 2022 S -221-001 Hawks Haven. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? That item will be placed on the agenda to be heard. Item number 17, 2022 S 253001 First Revision Lot 1 Resub of Lots 76 and 77 Madison Heights. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? That item will be placed on the consent agenda. Moving on to page eight of the agenda, item number 23, 2023 CP 003003 Parkwood Union Hill Community Plan Amendment. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 25, 2023 CP 014001 Donaldson Hermitage Old Hickory Community Plan Amendment. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Moving on to page nine of the agenda, item number 28, 2016 SP 043005 Trinity Lane Master Plan Amendment. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 29, 2023 SP 039001 2500 and 2506 Buena Vista Preliminary SP. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the agenda to be heard. On page 10 of your agenda, item number 31, 2023 SP 052001 Brentwood Chase 2. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the agenda to be heard. Item 33, 2023 SP 055001 Pennington Bend SP. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? That item will be placed on the agenda to be heard. On page 11 of the agenda, item number 39, 1884 P 006 Burton Hills Revision. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. On page 12 of your agenda, item number 40A, 2019 SP 053001 and the associated case, 40B, 2005 UD 006055. That's Ackland Park Residential SP and the associated UDO cancellation. Is anyone here in opposition to items 40A or 40B? Those items will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 41, 2022 Z 085 PR 001. This is a request to rezone at 712 27th Avenue North. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 42, 2023 Z 049 PR 001. A request to rezone along Pettis Road. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 43, 2023 Z 065 PR 001. A request to rezone along Donaldson Pike. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the agenda to be heard. Moving on to page 13 of the agenda, item number 45, 2023 Z 068 PR 001. A request to rezone along Centennial Boulevard. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 46, 2023 Z 069 PR 001. A request to rezone along Old Charlotte Pike. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 47, 2023 Z 071 PR 001. A request to rezone along East Trinity Lane. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 48, 2022 S 072001 Ridge Crest at Vista. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. And that is the start of our consent agenda. So now I will run through all of the items with their caption for the items that are on the consent agenda tonight. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Okay, item number 2 on page 4, 2023 CP 00003 Major and Collector Street Plan Amendment Calderwood Extension Removal. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 5, 2022 SP 066001 114 and 118 JC Napier. A request to rezone from R 6A to SP for properties along JC Napier Street. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page 5 of your agenda, item number 9, 2023 SP 042001 5043 Mountview Preliminary SP. A request to rezone from AR 2A to SP for property at 4053 Mountview Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page 6 of your agenda, item number 11, 2023 SP 047001 McAlpine SP. A request to rezone from multiple zoning districts to SP for properties located along Gallatin Pike and McAlpine Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page 7 of your agenda, item number 17, 2022 S 253001 First Revision Lot 1 Resub Lots 76 and 77 Madison Heights. This is a request for a final plat approval to create two lots along Neely's Bend Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including an exception for lot frontage. On page 8 of your agenda, item 23, 2023 CP 003003 Parkwood Union Hill Community Plan Amendment. This is a request to amend the Parkwood Union Hill Community Plan from T3 Suburban Neighborhood Evolving to Suburban Neighborhood Maintenance for properties along Hewing Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 25, 2023 CP 014001 Donaldson Hermitage Old Hickory Community Plan Amendment. This is a request to amend the Donaldson Hermitage Hickory Old Hickory Community Plan to change the community, the character policy area from Suburban Neighborhood Center to Suburban Neighborhood Evolving for properties along John Hager Road and Earhart Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page 9 of your agenda, item number 28, 2016 SP 043005 Trinity Lane Master Plan Amendment. This is a request to amend a portion of a specific plan located at Old Matthews Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page 11 of your agenda, item number 39, 1884 P 006 Burton Hills Revision. This is a request to revise a portion of a preliminary plan for property at 1 Burton Hills Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. And I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recused from that item. On page 12 of your agenda, item number 40A, 2019 SP 053001 Ackland Park Residential SP. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions and the associated case, item 40B, 2005 UD 006055 31st and Long Boulevard UDO Cancellation. 40A is a request to rezone from RM 40 to SP for properties along Ackland Park Drive and Hillcrest Place. And 40B is the associated request to cancel a portion of a UDO for properties along Ackland Park Drive. Item number 41, 2022 Z 085 PR 001. This is a request to rezone from RS 5 to R 6A for property... Oh man, I think I forgot the recommendation on item 40B. So we're just gonna give that one a go again. Item 40A, 2019 SP 053001 Ackland Park Residential SP. That's a request to rezone from RM 40 to SP for properties along Ackland Park Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. And the associated case, item 40B, 2005 UD 006055 31st and Long Boulevard UDO Cancellation. That's a request to cancel a portion of a UDO for properties along Ackland Park Drive. The staff recommendation is to approve if the associated SP is approved and disapprove if the associated SP is not approved. Back to item 41, 2022 Z 085 PR 001. That's a request to rezone from RS 5 to R 6A for property at 712 27th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 42, 2023 Z 049 PR 001. That's a request to rezone from SP to R 40 for properties at 6397 Pettis Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page 13 of your agenda, item number 45, 2023 Z 08068 PR 001. A request to rezone from IR to MUL for property at 5300 Centennial Boulevard. Staff recommendation is disapprove MUL and approve MULA. Item number 46, 2023 Z 069 PR 001. A request to rezone from R 40 and CS to MULA NS zoning for properties along Old Charlotte Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 47, 2023 Z 071 PR 001. A request to rezone from RS 10 to RM 20 ANS for properties along East Trinity Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 48, 2022 S 072001 Ridge Crest at Vista. This is a request for a final plat approval to create 51 lots along Green Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. And under item H, Other Business, C, New Employment Contract for Yu Shing Wong. And item 44 to, item 54, to accept the director's report.
Thank you. Quickly, before we go through the list of items, I wanted to follow up quick on item 11 because we had the council ladies' presentation on this item and I see it's on the consent agenda. So I was wondering if staff could just kind of give us an update?
Sure. So the plan that was submitted to staff originally included a connection from the site to McAlpine Avenue and then also a connection from the site to McAlpine Avenue for ingress and egress. Through the initial reviews of the plan, an access point was added onto Gallatin Pike so that then you had two access points, Gallatin Pike and McAlpine Avenue. When the last time that this was at the Planning Commission, the council member expressed some concerns that she had heard from the neighbor in regards to the access point on McAlpine. The applicant subsequently submitted a plan that removed the access point from McAlpine. So that's the plan that's before you tonight, is one without the access point. However, staff has included a condition that there must be that access point to McAlpine and that it would be for ingress only so that it would be signed to be one-way so that it could be utilized for ingress but not egress onto McAlpine. I mean, so with it being on the consent, it would be, that condition would be included, that there would be that access point to McAlpine as an ingress only. If the council member wanted to take it to council and actually remove that condition, then it would become a disapproved bill. And so the, the plan that is on consent does not have the, the connection to McAlpine, but it does include a staff condition that you all have adopted as your condition that would, that would include having that connection to McAlpine.
And the alley?
That is the alley. Sorry, yes, the, the connection to McAlpine.
Okay. I guess if any commissioners have questions or if this is, is Councilwoman Withers?
Thank you, Vice Chair. One thing that Councilmember Benedict mentioned last time was that the community on McAlpine has enrolled in, submitted an application for the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. And since that last Planning Commission meeting, we have received an update that if we allocate some, we have some surplus funds in some of our funds, some surplus balances in some of our funds in the, in the budget, which is a great thing to have. And NDOT made a presentation during our work session on the budget that stated that if a certain amount of funding is allocated for surplus funding for the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, they provided a list to us... they provided a list to us of which Neighborhood Traffic Calming applications would then be funded by the allocation, and McAlpine was one of those.
Yes, Commissioner?
So if we want to consider the council members' suggestion, we should take it off of consent and discuss it?
Correct.
I move we do that.
Okay. Okay. Then we will add that to our list, and with that, I will read the items on the consent agenda back to you, so we can make sure we're on the same page. Okay, so the items on the consent agenda are, item two, item five, item nine, item 15, item 16, item 17, item 20, not 16?
Not 15, 15 and 16 are on the agenda.
Oh, be hard.
Okay.
Okay, nine, 17?
Nine and 17, yeah.
23, 25, 28, 39, 40A, 40B, 41, 42, 45, 46, 47, 48.
And items 50 and 54.
Oh, right, and 50 and 51. Got lost there. Is that it? Should I read it once more to make sure, or we're good? Is that right?
That was what I had.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, so that is our jumbled list of items on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye, and the consent agenda is approved. Okay, so I'll try to do this a little better, and we'll read the items that we're gonna hear, because that's a shorter list. So the items that we're gonna hear tonight include item seven, item 11, item 15, item 16, item 29, item 31, 33, 35, and 43. That's correct. Okay. Okay, so we'll give everyone a moment to, to get resituated, and then we will start with item seven.
Yes, it is. But you did a great job. But we'll have none of that. When you're a lame duck, you'll just go all over the place.
We have to be very nice to Commissioner Blackshear.
Yeah, she doesn't have to come, does she?
Okay, well, we can get started as soon as you are ready. Or the computer is ready.
This is item seven. If I go into a coughing fit, I apologize, I do have cough drops. Okay, this is item seven. It went the wrong direction. Okay, this is a regulatory SP, it's intended to permit a mixed-use development on this site, the site is outlined in red, it is located on the northwest side of Division Street. The total land area is approximately 3.4, 3.34 acres, both properties are occupied with a single-story building, the building located at 1806 is listed as a national, is National Register Eligible District Property, and the use is classified as a recording studio. Staff recommends disapproval. The existing zoning is mixed-use intensive alternative, is intended for high-intensity mixture of residential, retail, and office uses that are urban in form, is the most intense mixed-use zoning district, it permits a maximum of 15 stories and limits height at the street to seven stories. This is the proposed regulatory SP, calls for a mixture of residential and commercial uses, it would permit a maximum of 25 stories and does not require stepback, it calls for a max floor area of 15, it specifies that any building shall incorporate elements of the existing recording studio and provide a listening room, the plan does not include any details regarding the standard, the proposed SP also includes limited architectural standards, all other standards would be provided, and the SP would be per MUIA. The site was within a center mixed-use policy, is intended to maintain, enhance, and create high-intensity urban mixed-use neighborhoods, the site is also within Subdistrict 1B of the Music Row Vision Plan, Subdistrict 1B supports a mixture of uses with active ground for, supports heights up to 20 stories, but only with the preservation commitment to music uses. The proposed SP is not consistent with the Music Row Vision Plan, the proposed height exceeds the height supported by the policy, given the constraints of division, the proposed SP does not provide adequate information to understand access, needed roadway improvements including sidewalks and other pedestrian facilities. inclusion staff recommends disapproval as the SP is not consistent with the Music Row Vision Plan, provides very limited detail, staff still recommends disapproval, also it is important to note that the plan has not been approved by NDOT or traffic and parking.
Thank you, is the applicant here? The applicant for item seven here? Okay, so if we have no applicant, we will go ahead and turn it up. Yeah, open the item for public hearing and see if there's anyone here speaking in support of item seven. Item, okay, no one in support of item seven? Anyone in opposition to item seven? Please come forward, and you will each have two minutes, and you can start with your name and address.
I'm Michael Bab, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you, and I've got a little more than two minutes, I'm the president of the HOA for the Bristol on Broadway, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, you get your five minutes.
Thank you. I'm a owner and resident of the condominium community, the Bristol on Broadway, 1803 Broadway, Nashville, Tennessee. The building extends from Broadway to Division Street, and on the Division side of the building is our entrance and exit to our garage, our parking garage, it's also an entrance and exit, people coming in and out of the building, so if it had an address, it would be 1804 Division Street, so right next door to these, to these units. So I've been directed by the board, also several residents have asked me to come and speak and express their concerns, and presently it's zoned for MUIA, and they want to have it as, as a specific project, and we've, we would like to oppose that, primarily because we want to continue to build our neighborhood as a residential neighborhood, and not something that has hotels or short stay, short-term stays, and to change a specific plan for one entity would give preference to that entity, potential for being used for other purposes in the future when the property sells, and we, our biggest concern is the short-term stay rentals, primarily because we've had a lot of issues, we've had residents in our neighborhood that have had, that have been assaulted by people that are transient, that are staying at a BRBO, Metro pretty much tells the people, well, not much we can do because these people are here and gone, we can't do, so I don't think our neighborhood is intended for that. Also, something you may or may not know, but because of the possibility of greater anonymity, human traffickers, a lot of drug dealers will use short-term, short-stay, short-term stay rentals for that purpose. Any major construction on this particularly small area, pretty much is gonna disrupt Division Street, which is a very small street, not much bigger than the alley, and the sidewalks are even smaller, and in our building, we have physicians and nurses who work emergency rooms, obstetricians that have, provide emergency services, so to disrupt that would disrupt their ability to get to their emergencies, also, we have, it's a metro school bus route, and if you're standing right in front of the building right now, traffic would be backed up past 19th Street, so you can't even get to the circle, so many of the owners were concerned about a high-rise that might have a crane that would be over our airspace, also with all the dust and debris that affects our garage, our garage being right next to it. Noise of the construction, we have many people now who, since the COVID, have, they work from home, so that would be disrupted to their ability to work from home, and we have children in the building that, that have after-school work as well. I personally witnessed from Chad Atkins, on 19th Street, from Chad Atkins to Division, and also at 18th and Chad, because I lived there, and the jackhammers that had to put in the new sewage was very loud at 4:30 in the morning, because they had, they can't disrupt the music recording, and so anyway, they had to put in a lot of new sewage and infrastructure, and I'm not sure we have the infrastructure to even handle a building this high-rise that's gonna be that they proposed for 27 feet, and then also, they said they were gonna blast down eight stories for parking, I, I don't know what, how that would affect the integrity of our building, but I believe that it would, so that's another reason that they did not want to have that, disapproved for that. The aesthetics of a building that would be this tall, I mean, it'd just be like a thumb sticking out in the middle of our, so I don't think the aesthetics would be appropriate as well, so the owners of the Bristol on Broadway suggest and support the staff's recommendation to disapprove this request, and to continue on as a mixed-use intensive for this zoning. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. Speaking in opposition to item seven? Yes.
Sorry?
You're speaking in opposition to item seven?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you all for being here, with all due respect and gratitude, thank you for being here, if I ever see in the future, I'm gonna refer to you as the Quorum Queen, so thank you for that.
Let's start with your name and address.
Oh, sorry, Kevin Warner, Scarrett Place South Condominiums, I'm the president of that group. Staff did a great job of explaining why it recommends disapproval, the report goes into more detail, I'm guessing because, I mean, no applicant, I mean, anyway, and I agree 100% with the entirety of the report, the application screams, "I don't care about the Music Row Vision Plan." Well, gosh, that's an interesting attitude, I find that self-indulgent and borderline rude to Mr. Swaggerd, and also to you, that kind of approach. The Major Collector Street Plan says Division's an urban, mixed-use collector, the stretch of Division in question is a narrow, two-lane road. On an early afternoon recently, I watched a school bus, public school bus, stop, I mean, right, almost right next to this location to discharge students. How much is their safety gonna be at risk during this project's construction and thereafter? And moreover, how much will the choke traffic on Division prevent emergency vehicles from driving quickly enough to save lives? These are real concerns to me, and I certainly hope to you. The traffic impact study, I'm quoting from staff report, shall be submitted, reviewed, and finalized, they didn't do it. Why not? Where is, are you hiding? I mean, where, where is this applicant? The project as designed would produce more pedestrians, more cars stuck in traffic on a street that is lined with nighttime businesses and their pedestrian patrons filling the sidewalks and spilling into the street. Some say that's a perfect recipe for another Red Door shooting, I certainly hope not. Lastly, to me, this meeting is about the applicant's trustworthiness, whether the information submitted is legitimate to you, and is legitimate and useful for you. The staff report again says, "The applicant has been unwilling to discuss the concerns with staff and has not responded to staff comments. These are concerns staff noted to the applicant during a pre-application meeting and after the formal application was submitted," end quote. When I and others met with the applicant over a month ago, before the interminable series of deferrals, deferrals, here I am, Director, tonight, I asked him, "Had you answered all staff questions about the project?" "Yes." I said, "Excuse me, I, I may have misunderstood you, there's nothing, no information staff has requested from you, you haven't fired?" "That's right." I mean, I find that offensive, and unprofessional. Now, I know that the code doesn't address an applicant's trustworthiness, but it means something to me, so I'm asking you, with all appropriate deference, I hope, and respect, please honor staff's request and disprove this application. Thank you.
Thank you, real quick, can I have, you're speaking on behalf of the Scarrett?
Scarrett Place, Scarrett Place South.
Okay.
Condominium.
Perfect.
Owners Association, Inc.
Great, we just wanted it on the record, since we have the five minutes. Anyone else here speaking in opposition to item seven? If not, since we don't have an applicant, we'll go ahead, and, and the council member's not here, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I will let Commissioner Blackshear kick us off, and then see if others have comments to add.
Well, it is unfortunate that the applicant is not here, because we've not, obviously, gotten a ton of information from the filings from the applicant, sort of nice to ask some questions, obviously, I mean, I don't think it's, well, maybe the applicant would debate this, but it doesn't seem like it's much for debate, that it's not consistent with the Music Row Vision Plan, thought it was very interesting that it would, the project would result in the demolition of the historic Register Eligible property, which is not a great thing, and then it's just, it seems like there's a lot of information just missing that would allow us even to really consider approval of this plan, so I would be in favor of disapproval, obviously, there's no questions to ask of the applicant, because they're not here, so not much more to say, I, I guess I'm interested in what the other commissioners have to say, but there may not be that much more to say on it.
Well, that's a good segue, does anyone else have further comment on this item that you'd like to share?
I, well, I agree with everything you just said, but I, we, we've heard nothing from the, the council member about this, he hasn't asked for a deferral, have he?
I, I had spoken with the council member sort of early on in this process, and let him know what our concerns were in regards to the request, and how the height exceeded the Music Row Plan, that there was a request to provide or to allow short-term rentals, he didn't, he didn't give me a position, and he has not requested any sort of filing of legislation, so he, he wanted us to basically hear the case based on planning.
Right, it sounds like he's not necessarily committed to it, he just thought they should have their day in court if they wanted it.
He just, yeah, I mean, he, he hasn't, he hasn't given me any sort of official stance, he didn't send any letter, he just wanted us to, to hear it.
Yeah, please, and, yeah, there you go.
I would move we disapprove this, and it's a staff recommendation.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
And I wanted to make sure, that was approved, the staff recommendation of disapproval?
Correct. Correct. Okay, the next item is item 11.
Hi, everyone, my name's Amelia Lewis, and I will be presenting item 11 tonight, this is a proposed preliminary SP, the McAlpine SP, other request is to permit a mixed-use development, staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. So the site is about 2.7 acres, it's shown on the screen in the gray, it's comprised of three contiguous parcels located north of the intersection of Gallatin Pike and McAlpine Avenue, one parcel has frontage along Gallatin Pike, one parcel- One parcel has frontage along McAlpine, and located towards the rear of these parcels is an existing landlocked parcel with no road frontage. The surrounding properties to the northeast and south are primarily residential in zoning and in land uses. Along Gallatin Pike, the land uses are primarily commercial. The proposed site plan is shown on the screen, so for a little bit of orientation, Gallatin Pike is on the left portion of the screen, and that runs kind of north-south. McAlpine Avenue is towards the bottom of your screen, running east and west. And so the, the property is shown there. There's one proposed commercial structure along Gallatin Pike. This is limited to three stories and a maximum of 15,000 square feet. Along McAlpine Avenue is an existing single-family structure proposed to be retained with the development. And towards the interior of the site is proposed 12 detached structures. These structures are townhomes, duplexes, and plex house structures oriented around a common open space. So looking at vehicular access into the site, version one on the left was included in the May 11th Planning Commission packet in which staff had recommended approval. This plan has two access points. So you see the northern access point provides an entrance off of Gallatin Pike, and the lower access off of, off of a drive or an alleyway would provide an access point onto McAlpine Avenue. Following this meeting, after the council member had made some comments about what the community had shared with her, the applicant had amended the plan to the version two, which is shown on the right, to remove the access point onto McAlpine Avenue. Version two is currently in the plan today. So planning and Endot met to discuss kind of these different options and the two different proposals. So the best practices for access management would be to primarily have alley access only and to limit that to the alley. However, given the frontage along Gallatin Pike, both agencies were amenable to the secondary access point, and that would kind of divvy up to the, the access for that commercial development and separate with the development to the residential. Staff is recommending that the alley be reestablished with the plan, with the conditions that it be one-way and serve only as an entrance into the development, but not an exit onto McAlpine, to address some of those neighbors' concerns. So here's some visuals of the site. The top left is kind of looking at that interior common open space where we have a variety of units, townhomes and plex houses. The version on the right is a further out aerial view. Due to the topo and the height of the development, it's really intended to kind of be tucked in behind the existing development along McAlpine. In that bottom-left image, you see the existing structure that runs along McAlpine and the existing structures along McAlpine with that development put in place behind. And lastly, the, the image on the right is just kind of an image from that great lawn area, showing the relationship of, the orientation of those units towards each other. And so there are two policies on the site. The first one is shown kind of in that pink diagonal area, and that's the urban mixed-use corridor policy. And then the second is the urban neighborhood maintenance policy, which is shown in the solid light pink tan color for that larger parcel. So the urban mixed-use corridor policy is applied to the parcel located along Gallatin Pike, and this policy area is intended to enhance mixed-use corridors with a greater mix of high-density residential or mixed-use development. Gallatin Pike is classified as an arterial boulevard in the major and collector street plan, and overall, the proposed development is consistent with the intent of this policy to provide high-density and mixed-use development along a corridor. The remaining portion of the site is within the urban neighborhood maintenance policy, which, as we typically understand it and interpret it, is intended to maintain as, maintain our urban neighborhoods with moderate to high-density residential, maintain the development pattern, building forms, setbacks, and the building rhythm along the street. So in communication with our policy team and kind of understanding how neighborhood maintenance would be applied to this parcel, because it's in a little bit of a unique position and not typically how we see urban neighborhood maintenance being applied, is policy guidance in the higher intensity and transitioning section under the urban neighborhood maintenance guidelines. And this area kind of, it says that additionally areas with adequate infrastructure access and the ability to form transition and support existing or planned mass transit and the viability of consumer businesses are most appropriate for higher density. According to the section, allowing for higher-density residential building types in such locations will add value to neighborhoods, growing the market and demand for community, consumer services, and the demand for transit. So when we're really looking at the site, we see that development along Gallatin Pike and the corridor, and this more intense development kind of tucked in behind taking advantage of the infrastructure and the services available to it and its location. As the policy indicates, only with adequate infrastructure and access is a higher intensity-supported. In order to have the necessary infrastructure to support this level of development, staff recommends an additional condition to be added within our recommendation that the alley be put back in, as shown in the exhibit on the left. And staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I will go ahead and open up the public hearing as the applicant here. Come forth. As you know, you'll have 10 minutes, and you can hold back two minutes for rebuttal and start with your name and address.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I would like to reserve two minutes, please. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Scott Morton with Smith G. Studio at 602 Taylor Street. First of all, I want to sincerely thank the Metro Planning Staff, the Inglewood community, the Councilmember Benedict, for all of their input and support over the last year and a half as we've worked on this project. We've worked diligently with the stakeholders to create a plan that was directly the result of community input and reflected the, a tailored approach that would be contextually consensive with, with the neighborhood. Overall, the project was, has been well-received by the majority of residents. Some of the feedback included, most significantly, the traffic concerns on McAlpine, which is the, the main subject of debate on this project. We had intended to provide McAlpine access, but organized opposition of the community was very strong, as well as the council member. Other things included some comments about trash locations, which we accommodated revising and relocating, increasing landscape buffers between our project and the adjacent homes on McAlpine. So we doubled the landscape buffers on those areas and generally moved some height around at the request of, direct request of residents. And so our final submission reflects a plan that we feel incorporates the, the community input that we've had throughout this period of time. The proposed vision for the site is to create a residential development with diverse housing choices in an ideal location adjacent to a high-density mixed-use corridor. This unique location presents an opportunity to provide much-needed middle, missing-middle housing options on an existing underutilized parcel while complementing and respecting the existing neighborhood's development pattern and its context. The design provides for a holistic development approach, allowing four options, housing tying into the major corridor, and provide an opportunity to respect the history of the site with the preservation and renovation of the existing historic home on McAlpine Avenue. The current plan provides a primary vehicular entrance to Gallatin Pike to prioritize minimal disruption to the existing residential vehicular patterns on McAlpine Avenue. And so when we last came before the commission, it was surprise to us that the council member requested the removal of the alley at the request of the residents. We are in a tough spot because generally, as planners and good practices, we like connectivity, we like alleys, we like infrastructure. Having multiple points of access is beneficial to a project. But we're in a tough spot when we have such a significant amount of community members and a council member who we need to sponsor this at the council in opposition. So we felt it was in our best interest to gain her support is to revise it to reflect that. And so we did remove our proposed location for a new alley. It is noteworthy to say that there, the existing easement that is in place, which we were going to take advantage of originally, is, it was created by deed, and so it's not a metro right-of-way, but it's a, a public easement created by deed only between two private property owners. So it does kind of change the classification, if you will. But essentially, we're not here to debate that. It doesn't really matter who owns it. We're here to, you know, try to get the support of the council member and the residents of the McAlpine area. So in closing, I just want to say that the proposed plan, you know, we feel is contextually appropriate, it's fully compliant with the T4 urban mixed-use policy and the T4 urban neighborhood maintenance policy, and we really appreciate all the support and input that was involved, and we greatly appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further?
Yes. My name's Nathan Weinberg. I'm one of the developers in this project, so thank you for hearing it. We have spent, I'm going to say six months, it might be longer than that, meeting with the community ahead of our formalized meeting, meeting with them in the formal capacity, listening to and applying their concerns to this project. I'm a resident of Inglewood, in addition to being a developer here, and so I do care a great deal about what happens in this neighborhood. One of my partners on this project, who's also in this room, intends to live in the, the house that we're going to keep and renovate on the property. And so this is a project that isn't just a one-off for us. It's not something where we're just trying to erode the, the, the character of a neighborhood. We're trying to improve the character of the neighborhood. We're trying to access the elements along Gallatin Pike that we think really deserve additional residents, and then to enhance the commercial elements. So that commercial building on the front, I think, provides a lot of that. The community feedback is something that we've not pushed back on at all. I want to be very clear about that. And we oppose the alley because the community opposes the alley. We oppose the alley because the council person opposes the alley. And when we first came before this commission, that alley was something that Endot said they didn't want. Said it out loud, said it to my face. And then, in the course of that meeting, before we could be heard, Endot changed their mind. And this has led to two deferrals. Just fine, we're here now, and I'm grateful for that opportunity. But those deferrals have been at the want and wish of Endot and not the community who has to live here and live with the result of the end. And so I would just take a couple of seconds to say that we've worked really hard to establish community support for this project. Scott and his team have worked really hard for that also. I've worked directly with Councilwoman Benedict to make sure that this is a project that she's proud of also, in her district. And while we are happy to build what is approved at this, this body, it is something that the neighborhood does not care to have. And we have worked hard to develop an entrance and egress plan that gives plenty of space, and in fact, gives over that space to the city. And we think that this is representative of that. And so, just in closing, thank you for considering it. We really do appreciate that. Thank you for considering the community's feedback, and I, I wish you a happy vote. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here speaking in support of this item? Seeing none, anyone here speaking in opposition? Okay. Well, I don't know if you want your two minutes, but you do have your two minutes for rebuttal. There's nothing to rebut.
I'm sorry, I'm glad I did, because I did just want to make one more comment, that the, one thing from a traffic engineer perspective, just to take into consideration, is that we have been told by traffic engineer that the, the impact for the second access being removed would not impact the development of this size, of this number of units, 30 units. And furthermore, we're committed to providing a full TIS, of course, if, if necessary at final. So, thank you.
Excuse me? I just didn't hear the first part of what, I didn't take it in.
Oh, sure.
The first paragraph or something.
Yes, sir. That the preliminary conversation about the capacity of the road from a traffic engineer, again, it's not official, it hasn't been reviewed by Endot, so I don't mean to, to speak of anything, but that the impact of distribution of traffic would not be significant by eliminating one point of egress for, for 30 units.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So we will declare the public hearing closed, and Commissioner Johnson, would you like to get us started?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question about the McAlpine alley extension, should it be there or not there? So I think first recommendation was alley needed to be there. Is this Endot recommendation, or how was it come about in the original plan?
The, the plan as submitted included the alley, so the plan that was submitted to us for review included that alley. And so we reviewed the plan based on what was submitted to us, and Endot recommended approval of that plan with the alley. We've discussed it many times with Endot, and they are, have recommended approval of the plan with the alley.
So currently, is Endot is okay with removing it? Are we, are they agree on removing the updated plan, or would that be still recommended leaving it, but make it as one-way, just ingress only?
So, based on my conversations with Endot, including Devin Doyle, who sort of heads up the development review team over there, based on our conversations with Endot, the preference is actually to just have the alley without an access point onto Gallatin Pike. We try, when we're given an opportunity, to limit curb cuts and access points onto sort of our higher classification of roads. And so Gallatin Pike is a arterial, and so we would try to limit to the extent possible access points onto Gallatin. Hearing that there were concerns, we, Endot and Planning, were amenable to having the second access point. So our preference is actually no access onto Gallatin Pike, only the alley. And so we were compromising to provide the access point onto Gallatin Pike, so that that could be dispersed. So Endot and Planning agreed that that was acceptable, and they also agree that it would be acceptable to have the alley be one-way, so ingress only.
Commissioner, may I just, I think there's both a technical discussion and then a larger policy challenge that we have. And I would say that's true in this area. You see it in Councilwoman Toomes's district, where we will get proposals that are more intense than what the policy allows. And so often, the conversation with the developer is, if you want to go a little more intense, you really have to put the mobility infrastructure in to support that level of intensity. So we'll get a proposal at the upper end of the policy. And then, for whatever reason, the connectivity ultimately is something either the community doesn't support, or we might hear back from the developer, not in this case, I think they were amenable to doing it. But we see this challenge quite a bit, and so I think Endot looked at it technically, we looked at it and said, "If you want this number of units and this type of density, the way we would support that is with more connectivity." Often, what we'll say is, "If you don't want to do that, then perhaps we need to lower the unit count." And nobody wants to do that, which we understand. And so it's sort of, for us, that's, that's the challenge.
Yes, understand. I think, looking at the plan, I, so, plan itself, I think it worked out really good, a variety of of unit and density, height, placement. I think it comes really good. It's a win-win-win for the community development team and council lady and seems like a really great plan. Only sticking point is the extension of the alleyway through going through McAlpine. I mean, as a planning, you know, point of view, just imagining, because the structure facing to the Gallatin Road, that will be retail mixed use. So if we were to imagine typical traffic pattern, you know, people will go out through Gallatin to go wherever that workplace might be and then come home typical evening. At that time, traffic will have congestion, both restaurant usage, retail usage with people who live there. So in that sense, I think having second access to the unit for the future resident makes really sense. And at the same time, it will be one way only, so that will not, you know, come to McAlpine. But at the same time, if you were to really think about, I don't know the traffic pattern on that in that area, you know, some people may, you know, come through McAlpine to go to Gallatin to go that way. So that will be the existing traffic, there's nothing we can do about it. So that's the, you know, established pattern. So, you know, having alleyway might actually help. I understand, you know, neighborhood don't want to add a traffic. I totally get it. But, you know, the long range plan and future plan, having access is really helpful. Also, I am in support of staff recommendation and I think having, as of right now, having set one way and just ingress only will be a great compromise. And in the future, you know, traffic pattern change, residence change, that will give opportunity to have future connectivity. But as of right now, I think having one way is a great compliment. So in that sense, I'm concerned if this were to go to the council, then council remove that connectivity, what kind of consequences will have in the future plan? So not only disapprove, is there any way to assure there will be alley, but, you know, if we were to remove, not only disapprove, have to come back and how can we be assured? What can we cannot do anything about it if council decided to remove? Is is it their purview?
I think it is in council's purview to make a determination if it wanted to remove a condition. I have found most council members, if you raise an issue that is of technical merit and around a mobility issue, they would take that seriously. And I think that's something that the Planning and Zoning Committee that Councilman Withers could potentially address. And so you've put some comments on the record here that I think are important and would be important for the council member to hear. But procedurally, correct me if I'm wrong, I think at this point, they can have 27 votes to overcome and to to remove the condition. Sorry, let me make sure I say that correctly. If they remove the condition, she would have to get 27 votes or it could generate a re-referral, but I think there would be that choice, so.
Yeah, I would like to really emphasize because it's really affect future mobility and also safety for the, you know, fire access. I believe fire recommendation to have turnaround tower will be the one addition, but having, you know, access point, early access point will alleviate that condition. So both point, I really would like to kind of recommend staff recommendation to consider current alley position.
Sure, I'm happy to have a follow up discussion with with the councilwoman as well, if that's the sense, if that's where the commission lands. But we agree with you.
Other comments? Yes, Councilwoman Withers.
I think we're going to have a good discussion on this. Usually I'm pretty militant about increasing connectivity because we have so little of it in Nashville with our hub and spoke system. Having been by this site a lot, I don't, this is a site that I go by a lot, but don't off myself have often have a lot of reason to go up and down those particular streets. This, these are streets that lead to and from Dan Mill School. And we do know that on sometimes the streets that have unfortunately have the most speeding and erratic driving is parents trying to get their kids to and from school on time. It's just a reality, not my issue, but that's my observation. Also, you know, sidewalk connectivity is a little bit lacking in this area. So I do understand the concern from neighbors about that in particular. I do have a couple of, one of the thing that I will also point out about about this particular site and having seen some of the comments in the neighborhood group up there in Inglewood, which were pretty pointed, but this site actually has a beautiful row of mature trees. And so often we have to make a really hard choice in our city between trees and sidewalks in particular. And so I could be persuaded from my usual militancy about connectivity that in this particular case, there's already an entrance on the Gallatin that has in and out anyway. So that would remain regardless. I could be persuaded that in this case, really focusing on the condition about tree preservation on this site actually provides a better benefit, a more impactful benefit to the community than the alley connectivity, particularly since this is a largely vacant site where, I mean, it has a lot of trees along the edges and certainly this project will will plant a lot of new trees once it's eventually there. But but there is a lot of concern about loss of tree canopy and things like that in the community and and that will happen. I think that this is a really great example of an ability to add what we often call missing middle housing along the pikes. We often kind of our our pikes have such a narrow amount of of space on either side that it's difficult to build large projects or add large numbers of housing without going up. And I think this does this really well. And so for me, that trade off of preserving at least some of that green space and maybe specifically requiring tree surveys and tree protection for some of those trees might might persuade me to 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 value the trees more than the alley connection in this particular case. As I mentioned, McAlpine Avenue does have a neighborhood traffic calming application that is unfiled as I mentioned, we have so many more of these than we can ever find. As I mentioned, I don't, I don't have this as a handout, but it's on our SharePoint site, but NDOT did meet with the council and indicated that we do have a fund balance and some of their funds. And if we keep, if we give that fund balance to them, it's the way that it kind of works just for the viewing public is that sometimes we have a, when we have a balance and a surplus in funds, we can't spend it on operating dollars, but we can spend it on capital. And so because operating is a recurring expense, but sometimes when we have a fund balance, we can spend it on capital. Neighborhood traffic calming is a capital expense and allows us to pay for it with cash rather than through general obligation bonds, which is financially really great, too. So in this particular case, NDOT selected a list of like the next highest ranking or highest scored traffic calming programs. So we will likely include that funding and perhaps McAlpine will remain on that list. I think with alley, if the alley were to be included, I would hope that that would give some comfort to neighbors on McAlpine anyway that they will potentially get that. But in this unique case, I again, could be persuaded that those trees are probably more meaningful to that neighborhood than that particular access point, since there's already in and in and out egress, ingress and egress point onto Gallatin.
And we'll make sure whatever plan is approved, that the however council acts, that that that's considered with NDOT's traffic calming program and that it's all working together to Commissioner's point.
Yep, thank you.
Other comments on this side of the table? Commissioner Clifton?
Well, I'm somewhat persuaded by the councilman. This is an interesting one. I mean, we, this is us saying this may be too much density without certain things as opposed to trying to sell density. Is that not the?
I mean, I think are so many of our policy frameworks or decisions in the T four areas really value density where it needs to be, but says that we need to invest in the alley and other access infrastructure to accomplish that. And so I think if we want to review this under the current policy and staff recommends that we do, then, you know, you just, we recommend installing the access and the other urban design framework needed to accomplish that. And so I think, you know, that's really how we approach needing missing middle housing in areas that are adjacent to major corridors and pikes. And there are some neighborhoods that already have those alley networks and do really well. Often alleys can make access and urban design quality much improved, although I know for some reason they can seem unusual in other neighborhoods, but so I I'm not recommending reducing the density. We're just recommending accomplishing the the infrastructure investment.
And I'm just trying to figure out how to do that. I mean, I'll be, I think, I think alleys are one of the reasons why the Hillsborough, West End and Belmont Hills were the best neighborhoods in town.
I mean, well, I.
But, sorry about that.
Get in trouble for saying that.
No, but I mean.
They help those areas work well.
They do, and I would, I would like to see it. I'd like to see the density too for the missing middle. I don't think we're going to.
So I think if you.
I don't think she can do that politically.
Well, then that's her decision. I think yours, yours is the technical one. And so we're just asking for the technical decision, which is, and she can make the political decision.
Right.
Is our advice.
Just trying to weigh it and and consider what Brett was saying. And he's made an argument that that I hadn't thought of, but was somewhat, maybe I was being a little resiliency in it, because it's a lot to ask. I mean, we'd like to have the the density, I think. Her role is a representative of the count of the area and she's, you know, done a good job with that. So I'll be thinking about this.
Commissioner Henley?
Yeah, so again, I think Councilman Withers did a really good job. I took a special interest in this project, particularly because I personally like projects like these and wanted to, you know, see it in its current state. And again, I love the the approach to bringing this scale of housing to this community. One of the things that stood out to me, and I know we have a lot of things considered, but I think about the community perspective and a lot of times, you know, these types of projects are oftentimes not controversial or not an issue with the community. It's the spiral off or the additional things that keep getting tacked on after you've already had conversations. And I find this is yet again, one of those things, I think the community was like, okay, yep, no alley and it works and we're going to have an extra 30 new neighbors and we're good. And then we come and say, oh, and by the way, that alley you said no to, we want to put it in. That's one reason I prefer not to have the alley, just from the function of having community support to the types of housing projects we need. But also specific to this site, you know, there's already an access point off of Gallatin that serves commercial right there. It's actually, I don't know if the, if you can go back to the image, the final image that we had, it's just to the north of this and it actually is access. And so to me, there's already kind of two close access points. You can use the alley and it actually creates a bit of a loop if this improvement is done as it's shown on the on the right hand side. So I mean, I think from an accessibility standpoint, from the, again, I think this is gentle density from the low volume, I think it would function without the alley. I understand there's some concerns about that. I I think it would function without the alley. I do think alleys are great, but it's when you accentuate the ones you already have, not always producing another one. And then for me, I think, again, I I I see it scale, being able to function because there isn't an extreme amount of density. And so you do have an in and out and then you have just to the, like, I think that's traveling north, another in and out access point on Gallatin Pike. So I'm inclined to, I think if you don't look at just this site, but you look at the immediately adjacent sites, you you might have a different view or perspective of the accessibility.
Commissioner Blackshear, do you have any comments?
Um, yeah, I do. I think if I were a neighbor, I would absolutely not want the alley. I mean, I totally get it. But I think it from a planning perspective, it's clear that the alley, I mean, I understand what you were saying, Councilman, and what you were saying to Commissioner, but I do think it's clear from a planning perspective that it'll be preferable to have the alley. I I agree with everything that was said about having additional traffic on Gallatin, which is going to be a high traffic area already and having an additional access point for McAlpine would be preferable for an area that's already being developed, maybe more dense than what we typically would see in this policy. So I mean, I think that from a planning perspective, an alley here would be the way to go. I absolutely understand the council ladies' concerns. If I were a neighbor, I would have the exact same concerns. And it's ultimately a council decision and she may be able to have this pass with the 27 votes and that's just what it is. But if our role is as a commission is to look at it from a planning perspective, I think it's clear that the alley should be there. And if and if at the council level, it's decided to not have the alley, then we've done our job and they've done their job. So I would be in favor of having this plan approved of what the alley included. I have just a practical question and this may just seem silly, but I know the compromise was to have the alley be one way. How practically do you make the alley one way? Because I mean, I've gone certainly the wrong way in alleys before. Is it just narrow it so that folks cannot have like two cars going or just how does that?
I mean, typically alleys are, I mean, they're technically wide enough for two cars, but typically they're really only one car sort of at a time. But you just place signage signage at the entrance. I mean, you 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 basically have to use signage to to indicate that it would not be, that it would be for entrance only, not for exit.
People always pay attention to those signs. I know they do. Well, I, but I I agree with Commissioner Johnson and and supporting staff's recommendation with the alley included as a condition. And I completely understand what the council lady was saying and that's her purview, she would like to remove it at the council level. So I could make a motion.
Sure.
Were you going to say something, Commissioner?
You're saying if we did, if we if we passed the motion you're about to make, that it would be her decision.
She, yeah, she indicated that she would want to take it off and she would just meet, right, yes.
So she would just try to get the 27 votes?
Right. So I would move to approve staff's recommendation of approval with the condition of the alley included and all other conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
Okay. Motion in second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. How many, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so we are on to item number 15.
Item Dustin Shane, staff planner. Item 15 is the Chandler Reserve subdivision. This is a request for final plat approval to create 49 lots. Our recommendation is to approve with conditions. Zoning on the site, R10, single family. Policy, there's some conservation covering a stream, but the rest of the site is T3 suburban neighborhood evolving. Here's a look at the lot layout with the extension of Lisa Anne and then two new rights of way proposed there, stubbing out to the edge of the county. So just a refresher on how the final plats work now. At March 9th, NPC, you all approved an amendment to the rules and procedures that was based on a council resolution that was a result of a change in state law regarding the administrative approval of final plats. So now staff can approve final plats administratively that create no more than five lots and final plats up to 25 lots if they have an approved concept and final plan. Formerly, staff could approve no more than two lots administratively, but we could approve all final plats. but we could approve all final plats that had an approved concept and final. Those could be approved administratively. So this subdivision is only before you, uh, because it includes more than 25 lots, it does have an approved concept plan that was approved by this body, and then an approved final development plan that staff approved, uh, with, with approved grading plans. This is in the T3 suburban transect, specifically the neighborhood-evolving, uh, policy. At our review, we found again that all zoning regulations were met for an R10 cluster lot subdivision, um, all 49 lots that are proposed, uh, the two new rights-of-way, and the one extension of an existing right-of-way. So we, we recommend approval with conditions. Thank you.
So if I may, just to put a fine point on this, because this is unusual to the commission, this has, this would have been done as an administrative review prior to March of this year, but because of the state law, you're having to review the final, but I think it'd be important just to confirm from council, there's not a substantive decision before you. It is based on a previous decision that you made. Is that correct?
Correct. And Tara can speak probably to the state vesting law as it regards to the, of previous approvals.
Yeah, as council, I can confirm, um, that, that RS 2023, 2047, um, you guys were able to administratively put back some of those responsibilities on the planning commission, but this is one of those where it exceeds the, uh, the number. Um, so the, it would have to come to you. What's different here is that this is, of course, this procedure happened after we had been doing things the way we had been doing them for so long. And so for here, we'd already received and approved a final plat. Lisa, is that correct?
This has had an approved concept plan and an approved final site plan, which is construction plan. So the, the plating process is three steps. Concept plan, which comes to the planning commission. Final site plan, which are administrative and can remain administrative even per the change in the state law, regardless of the number of lots. And then final plat, which is sort of the, the last piece after, in some cases, construction has already taken place to some degree. Um, but because the state law says if it's over 25 lots, it has to come back to you. But I think, and Tara can speak to this, I think that they have met thresholds that place them within the protection of the vested rights act.
Yeah, under, again, citing here are Resolution 2014, 1330, um, the following types of applications are final development plan, which are vested. So you have the subdivision, subdivision development plan or final site plan, final plat or final site plan required by 1741-70. So this, um, plan is already vested.
We acknowledge this is frustrating, because when you hear cases, you want to have a purposeful review, and we do as well, um, but, and we're hoping to work with the state on what has been done procedurally here. But I know this is unusual and it's new for us, so we just wanted to acknowledge that. Chair, thank you, um, for letting me jump in there before you open the public hearing.
No, I, I got a little confused.
Um, okay. So we will go ahead and, so procedurally, you just said there's not a substantive case for us to hear, but we still go through the poll. I would recommend opening the item for public hearing, hearing from the applicant and anyone who wants to speak on it. We just wanted to acknowledge, um, procedurally and also legally where we are, um, which is that the plan is, is likely vested already. Okay. So we'll open up the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Good afternoon, and you will have, uh, 10 minutes, and you may withhold two minutes for rebuttal.
All right, I'll request a rebuttal. The rebuttal, please. Um, I'm Chris Cowan with Meritage Homes, 2555 Meridian Boulevard, Franklin. I appreciate your time tonight. Um, sorry that we're here for this. I think we actually had made application for this plat in January, so we got caught really in between the, uh, ruling from the state. But, uh, we understand the conditions of approval that staff has made on the plat, and, uh, we're in agreement with those, and would just, um, appreciate a favorable vote tonight and here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here speaking in support of this item, item 15? Is there anyone speaking in opposition? Do you want to come forth? You will have two minutes and start with your name and address, please.
I'm a representative of the board, uh, the board of, uh, Heritage Hills. Just want to let you know that. I'm Joe Delikas. I live on 152 Dollar Drive. I'm here. I did not. Okay. I am here today to express my deep concerns and opposition regarding the ongoing development by Meritage Homes and Chandler Reserve, which is adjacent to my community, Heritage Hills Housing Development. As a member of the HOA Board, it is my responsibility to advocate for the best interests of our residents and the surrounding areas. Chandler Reserve was once a beautiful wooded area teeming with trees and wildlife. It serves as a runoff water area for art development, as well as the houses across the reserves such as Lisa Ann and parts of Hickory Hills Development in Wilson County. Unfortunately, it is also prone to flooding, especially during torrential rains, which are frequent in Davidson County. The water from our community and others will eventually flow into the newly constructed homes in Chandler Reserve, posing a significant risk to their future occupants. This is the bottom of the flatland. There is nowhere else for the water to go. I must emphasize that Meritage Homes has a notorious track record of building homes in a flood-prone area and disregarding the homeowner's complaints about water issues. This is evident from the over 300 complaints lodged against them on the Better Business Bureau page, with a significant portion related to water and flooding problems. Meritage Homes has shown a lack of responsibility and accountability when it comes to addressing these issues. I urge you to review these complaints and the company's responses for a better understanding of the situation. Uh, I need to skip some of this, I'm sorry. Uh, it is disheartening that this council has already approved the destruction of our community through the development in Chandler Reserve, which jeopardizes the safety of future residents. Continuing, continuing to approve such projects, which prioritize overpriced housing over the safety and well-being of the community, does not address the issue of home affordability and natural. Uh, also, in my community, they're, they're placing blasting signs on our, on our lawns, and we're having hard times getting them removed until we remove them ourselves. That is Meritage and solid ground technology. Uh, sorry, I'm skipping around. Uh, all right, no, no problem. I, I lost my, where I was. I apologize.
That's okay. Thank you very much for coming down. Anyone else speaking in opposition? If not, the applicant has reserved two minutes for rebuttal. Do you want to come forth?
Yes, uh, thank you. I think, uh, as Dustin said earlier, unless the, um, you know, our plans were well under construction, have been there since, uh, September, so, you know, all the plans approved by public works, stormwater, uh, sewer water and all that. So we're building in compliance with those plans that have been approved by, you know, Metro Staff. Um, and as far as the blasting signs, we're, I was unaware of that, but we are glad to remove those off of private property.
Okay. With that, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And Councilman Withers, do you want to start us off?
Sure. Um, thank you for that. It looks like this was approved a while back. Maybe a question for legal, uh, or staff. Um, what avenues, if any, are available to this body to disapprove this application? Like, on, on what basis could we make a disapproval or not?
I don't think
Pointed question, but yeah.
So if this were a concept, if this were a concept plan, you would review it against the subdivision regulations and the, and the general plan, which informs the subdivision regulations. At this point, you have a final site plan before you. Staff has recommended, or not a final site plan, a final plat. So staff has evaluated this against your earlier approval. So you would need to somehow find a mistake that the staff made in consistency between this plan and your earlier approval. I believe there's no mistake, and therefore I don't believe you would have a basis to disapprove. The, uh, question of vesting, I believe, would be settled in a court, but your legal advisor is, is saying that we believe that the plan is already vested at any point, and so it would be protected.
I guess the only thing I would add here is, uh, the timing is what impacts this, right? So if you get these earlier, which you will going forward now that this law is in, in, in effect, which, at what process would they see those plans going forward?
So you will always continue to see concept plans, and so for something like this, you, a concept plan is the first time that you see a subdivision of this size. Um, I remember when this concept plan came through, it was one that was presented, there was some opposition, you all heard it, made a recommendation of approval, and that plan was subsequently approved. Um, so concept plan is the first time that you're seeing a subdivision, you're seeing the layout, you're seeing the streets, lots, all of those things, open space. So that is sort of the, the initial approval. And then a final site plan, which state law continues to allow to be reviewed at the staff level, when a final site plan comes in, staff is reviewing it for consistency with the concept plan that was approved. The final site plan came in for this, it was consistent with the concept plan, all of the technical reviewing agencies reviewed the construction plans and recommended approval of those, and subsequently, construction began.
Well, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Uh, I was going to say, like, having heard that, I think this one came before I was on the commission, but, uh, it sounds like it was approved. I haven't heard any, uh, testimony, uh, or evidence that something is, is different than what was approved by the commission at that time. And so it sounds as though there's not a, a basis that this body can disapprove today. And having said that, unless other commissioners have additional comments, I would, um, make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
One, anyone else have any further?
Yeah, I, um, I agree with what you're saying. We've got to, uh, fix this process, though, and we will, it sounds like. This, this has happened where a citizen has come down to make his views known, and then finds out that we don't have any authority, which is not something we ever want to see happen. Um, it would not be the first thing that the Tennessee State Legislature deserves some blame for, but I wouldn't go into that right now. I just want to make that comment, though. We will fix this so that people won't be coming down for
Yes. Yeah, this came a little too late, timing-wise, for us to try to get to the legislature, and there were, as you can imagine, some risks associated with that also. So we chose to let this one go for right now, but we are going to go back to, um, work with our lobbyists and to ensure that this process works, because I don't like bringing things before you either that, where you're, you know, you're, you're locked up a little bit, so thank you, yeah.
And I think it's frustrating to the public as well, and I totally get that, yeah. Yeah.
Any further comments? Then with that, Councilman Withers, do you want to make your motion?
I would make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
You have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Um, Commissioners, do we, I think it would be great if we could get through one more before we take a little break, if that's okay with you? Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. Lot 12 Martin presenting item 16, um, Hawks Haven subdivision. The request is for concept plan approval to create four lots on property located at 1,008 Solier Drive and a portion of property located at 1,011 Solier Drive. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. The site is located west of the terminus of Solier Drive, um, which is west of Rodney Drive, and has been zoned R40 since at least 1974. The surrounding land uses are single-family residential, and surrounding properties are zoned R40 and RS40. Um, before we move further, just want to remind that there are three steps in the subdivision process. Um, we'll be looking at the concept plan today, um, which is the initial step, and a final site plan and final plat are the next steps following approval of the concept. The community character manual policy applied to the site is suburban neighborhood maintenance as well as conservation. The planning commission has adopted subdivision regulations that include standards for specific transects. Since this site is located within the suburban transect, the regulations found in Chapter 3, um, of the metro subdivision regulations were used in the evaluation of this application. Now, let's take a look at the site plan. It proposed, the plan proposes four lots, which are all approximately 0.92 acres. Lot 1 is, um, 40,027 square feet. Lot 2 is 40,030 square feet. Lot 3 is 40,097 square feet, and Lot 4 is 40,042 square feet. As you can see, there's a stormwater management area, um, that's identified within the open space that spans the eastern, um, boundary. Vehicular access will be provided from Solier Drive, which currently exists as unimproved platted right-of-way located between the site and Rodney Drive to the east. Solier Drive will be constructed as a new public road extending from Rodney Drive and, um, will terminate into a cul-de-sac. Based on available data, the property contains areas of steep slopes, uh, as identified on Metro's topographical maps. Um, and you can see kind of faintly on the plan, lots 1 and 4 have been identified as critical lots, which have the star, um, and that is due to the presence of slopes greater than 20%. Critical lots on steep slopes are reviewed against, um, the applicable development standards of the zoning code and the critical lot plan requirements in our subdivision regulations. There's also, um, potential problem soils that have been identified along the western boundary, um, along the lots 1 and 2, and, um, yeah, we'll move on. So following our review, staff finds that the proposed subdivision meets the standards of Chapter 3 of Metro's subdivision regulations. All proposed lots meet the minimum standards of the R40 zoning district, and, um, all, all of the lots proposed front on a new public street. Um, since this subdivision is not an infill subdivision, the lot compatibility requirements are not applicable. And lastly, um, all metro reviewing agencies have recommended approval. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you. Go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is the applicant here? No applicant for this item? Item 16? Okay. Well, then we will, um, is there anyone here that's speaking in support of item 16? Anyone speaking in opposition? Okay, you can come forth and, uh, if you would like to address the commission, and you'll have
Yes.
Yeah, if you could line up so that we can kind of keep people going. I think, um, for mine, it'll just be the first couple, and then, um, Molly's going to speak.
Just tell us to go.
Okay, okay. We're just trying to keep to that two minutes, which is terrifying.
All right. My name is Katie James. I live at 798 Rodney Drive, which is directly across the street from the proposed site. But I'm actually reading a letter from Edna Salier. Edna lives at 1011 Sawyer Drive. She is directly adjacent to the subject property. These are her words. I reconsidered agreeing to allow the easement and development. When my late husband Howard and I were approached by Maria Cavallo to agree to this development to be built, we were advised it was only going to be two additional homes. My husband Howard was suffering from dementia at the time, and we loved Maria and wanted to help her in any way. Maria and Mark asked us to sign an agreement regarding the road easements and development. I do not have a copy of the document that we signed, but we were also advised that we would have final approval of any changes. Mark came back another time and told us that he was putting in a few more homes, and Howard agreed. I asked Howard if he was, this is what he really wanted to do, and he said he would do anything for Maria, so we agreed as well. I don't believe you realize the magnitude of this change and how it would affect our Since this time, we've been told by the developer that if we didn't do what he would want with this land, he would sell the land to another developer who would put up homes of lesser value and quality. He repeated this at a community meeting in front of 50 people. Just before Howard passed, he voiced his concerns regarding the development and went to a neighbor's house, John and Katie James, to advise that he was ready to fight. In reviewing the recent plans, it appears that they are taking more of my property than I originally thought. Furthermore, I did not sell my property to Mark Marshall, nor would we have agreed to do so. From what I gather on these plans, the road will be so large that they will have to take down dozens of my full mature trees, which I have pictures of. I will not agree to the removal of the trees because it will affect my access to the property. Since I was verbally advised that I have final say on this project, I'm revoking my approval of the easement and looking at the plans, I don't believe I fully understood the scope of the project, and I no longer agree to the development. I do have copies of her letter, which she had noted on.
Thank you.
On a different note, my name is Molly Miller. My address is 6744 Pennywell Drive, and I'm a retired Vanderbilt geology professor. If you, actually, the green forested hills around Nashville are one of the most wonderful things about our setting, and it's unique. And the Nashville, Nashville Next proposal really tries to protect these forested hillsides. Now, there's a flip side to those hillsides, and that is that they're very prone to landslides. And if you would turn the first next slide, this is a map of Davidson County showing in all of the, for most of the 560 landslides that occurred in a couple days in the 2010 extreme rain event. Notice that many of them are in the sort of rim around the city, and especially in the southern part of the county. Next slide, please. This is a side view of the parts of Nashville that are very landslide-prone. Now, and the next slide, please. This is, shows the, is a map made by the Tennessee Division of Geology that shows the landslide probability and problem areas in the Bellevue quadrangle, which is part of this Westmead development. And in red, the dark red, are massive slopes that are very, very steep. The red circles are old landsides that occurred before 1979, when this publication was done. And the blue, blue on the right, it's blown up so that you can see the proposed development in the blue square. So you can see, there's two big points. One is that the development is in the pink area, which means the slopes that are very sensitive to and are likely, are able to fail if disturbed. That means the landslide. The second point is that the development sits right atop a previous landslide. So these things keep happening, and this is true not just in this neighborhood, but in all of the same geologic setting around the city. So this represents an important precedent decision. Next slide, please. And what happens is when a house is built on a steep slope, they flatten it. And if the recipe for causing landslide, oh, see, it wasn't going.
It wasn't going.
I, oh, okay, I kept looking. Sorry, okay. Well, here's the deal. There's a recipe for disaster. For, if you want a recipe for how to make a landslide, you do several things. First is, you steepen the slope by cutting a flat place for the thing to build a house. Second, you add water by huge events. Thirdly, you add the weight of great big houses. So to conclude, you could say that this is not a good thing for development because of the landslide probability, and it's all over Nashville.
Thank you. You are obviously a good professor, because we were all listening well. You were a good professor. We were all engrossed. Over two minutes.
And I thought, oh, what is this?
Okay, so we're back to our two minutes, and start with your name and address, please.
I'm Robert Heller, and I've lived at 801 Rodney Drive for 25 years. I've been a developer and builder of single-family homes in Murray County since 1994. Last summer, at a neighborhood meeting, the developer stated that there were no trees of any size or significance to be removed where the detention pond would be located. He further stated there were no cedar trees evident which would be indicative of shallow rocky soil. On October 18th, I counted 32 8-inch-plus caliber trees on the identified area for the detention pond with at least three massive trees with a circumference of 10 to 15 feet and 50 feet high. These trees in this forested area already serve the main water retention purpose for everything below the line which runs the entire length of my backyard. There are cedar trees visible to the rear of the current home on the property. The project proposes to cut down a half acre of mature trees for the detention pond. The developer says the function of the detention pond is to manage excess water coming off the proposed paved circle in New City Street. The drains along a new Salier circle show an inlet and outlet into the detention pond, which does not address the current significant flow to the north and Harriswood Drive. With 10% of the proposed development devoted to a detention pond, there's a recognition of the severity and volume of stormwater runoff, but it does not serve the natural flow of water of the property. And a few weeks ago, a massive tree fell up the hill after heavy rain. It took several large trees with it, and the roots took out 24 feet of my, of my fence. So it's a bad thing. It's a bad thing for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. I'm Wayne Underhill. Residence is 6341 Torrington Road. I live there with my wife, Ann. Been there for 38 years. I will be, I'm president of the Westmead Neighborhood Association. I will be reading the statement of Steve Minebress and his wife Jill, who live at 805 Rodney Drive, and I've got these copies. Some reading Steve's statement in regard to this. He lives, his residence is at 805 Rodney, which directly borders the proposed development on the east. Steve comments. After a management career in Tennessee state government and having served on the Board of Commissioners for another Metro National Department, I can tell you, this project has very serious problems. I have 26 years' personal experience dealing with the unstable conditions of the proposed Hawks Haven hillside. We are all here today to request the Planning Commission not approve this request in any form. This project will have long-term negative environmental impacts and further aggravate an already difficult problem. Try the next slide, please. Next slide. There. Good. Nashville Next T3 suburban community character policies are filled with specific language that speak directly to the problems with this property. For example, the intent of T3 is to keep undisturbed environmentally sensitive land features in a natural state to minimize infrastructure and public service cost and preserve the unique environmental adversity of Davidson County, which is important to a healthy economy. And I'm out of time.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening.
Hello. My name is Ann Underhill, the other half of that. 6341 Torrington Road. I'm gonna address the subdivision regulation 3.5 infill and subdivisions. This is regarding the lot frontage. The frontage of Lot 2 of the four lots that we have is 31.96 feet, and Lot 3 is 38.95 feet, while the average frontage of existing homes on Rodney Drive is over 100 feet. This fails subdivision regulation 3-5-2. These road frontages are not comparable with the surrounding lots as required in T3 neighborhood maintenance. Subdivision regulation 3-5 dot 1 says lot frontage is either equal to or greater than 70% of the average frontage of surrounding parcels. These lots do not meet that requirement, and they do not meet the exception provided in subdivision regulation 3-5D dot F. The proposed development does not keep with the rhythm and pattern of existing developments under T3NM suburban neighborhoods, maintenance, and policy. All parcels identified as critical lots are placed on top of each other, with each parcel at least 10 feet higher or lower than adjacent lots according to the contour elevation map. There are a few existing homes or parcels that are created at the end of cul-de-sac. However, the big difference is those existing parcels are placed on the similar elevations and not on top of each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is John Castleman, and I live at 6760 Pennywell Drive with my wife Sarah. I'm gonna shorten this a little bit, just because we've all talked about Nashville Next, and how it doesn't, you know, it's a conservation area and a maintenance neighborhood, and this just destroys that concept. We've talked about opposition of or support of the community. This is us. Developer's not here. He clearly doesn't care about Nashville. He cares about his pockets. I believe he's kind of mentioned that in a meeting before anyways. You know, he's, he's mentioned he has deep pockets. He can make this go through. We're here to just oppose that development. It affects us and it affects our neighbors. The ingress egress on Rodney Drive, it's one way in, one way out. There's no need to hire our density. So I just, you know, want to highlight that it is a, it's a conservation area. There's no need to change it, you know? The developer doesn't care about this community. We do. So that's why we're here. So, thank you.
Good evening.
Hey, guys. Alex Craw, 811 Camat Court. Good evening. Thanks to the commissioners for their time and for their insight. I've spoken to many of you before, as I'm also a developer building new infill construction around the urban core. As a general contractor, my company's built over 50 new homes in the last eight years and has also rezoned and subdivided several of those properties in the process. There are many places in and around Nashville where density and growth makes sense from a neighborhood and utility standpoint. It's my opinion as a builder and as a resident that development and expansion by subdivision is not suitable in this neighborhood for many of the reasons that these residents have mentioned here today, but I'd like to add another. Subdividing of any kind sets a very dangerous precedent in this immediate area. I counted over 50 parcels on Rodney Drive and the adjoining streets alone that would meet subdivision compatibility standards and have over double the required lot square footage. For instance, a lot zoned RS40 with over 80,000 square feet of lot area, which is roughly 1.83 acres. These parcels share the same T3 neighborhood maintenance and conservation overlays as the property we are discussing today. Allowing Hawks Haven to be subdivided into two, three, or four lots sets a dangerous precedent that over 50 parcels could implement in the near future. Also, this parcel is one of the few that has R40 zoning, meaning by right, the owner can build up to two homes whether this subdivision is approved or disapproved. Regardless if he builds two homes or five homes, which is the maximum allowed if this gets approved today, they would still be required to upgrade the private drive into a street, extend water service, and create and extend sewer service since the existing home is currently on a septic system, which is no longer allowed when sewer is so close by. As a developer, I understand why a builder would want to scale the amount of homes to the absolute maximum to spread out these immense infrastructure costs, and it is my opinion that if the owner was to build two homes, he just would pass on this project because of those infrastructure costs. Thank you, guys.
My name is Lance Hornbuckle. I live at 925 Harriswood Drive with my wife Jill. Our house is just to the north of the property line, which on the overhead maps that you saw would have been just to the right of the house that's there now. Our house was built 34 years ago, and it was constructed much like the houses that are being considered now. It was a cut-and-fill lot. It was, was one. We have two and a half acres, but we, you know, when it was built, the cut-and-fill exposed the type of soil that we have there, and also the rock. And when it would rain, you would actually have underground streams that would have water coming out and coming through our, our development. We also discovered that our lot has a large clay content. It does not absorb water well, which leads to more runoff. We brought in many loads of topsoil in order to aid in plantings of trees for water absorption. However, it's been difficult to find trees and shrubs that will survive in the dense clay base that we have. Even when successful, it doesn't prevent every, every event. Our basement has flooded from both above-ground runoff and the underground streams. During the flood of 2010, we had some ground movement on the higher part of our lot that caused our pool and deck to move and settle. There's a picture of it in your, in your package. The topo presented as part of the developer's application shows that half of lots 2, 3, and 4 actually do not flow to the detention basin, but to the northwest corner of the property down through mine. During heavy rain events, water from that property to the west, which is higher, travels from that portion of the development to our lot to the northwest corner, causing issues with property located, the Minebress property at 805 Rodney. The picture of the flooding that you see on Salier Drive happens at Harriswood Drive and Rodney, which is two doors down from what you see right there. We oppose the development for all of these reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Sue Danilak. I live at 758 Rodney Drive. I'm basically a transplant. I've been here in Nashville for a year and a half, and I have to say, never in my life have I ever seen such torrential downpours when it rains here in Nashville. But my observations, and that's just what they are, observations for what I've seen living in the hills on Rodney Drive, is that when it does rain, there is so much water that it just pours off all of the land and into the roadways. I mean, that, that image there, it doesn't really even tell the story. Now, if you add a wider road, a large cul-de-sac, four, five houses, I can't imagine where the water is going to go. I'm sorry, it's just not going to fit in any kind of water basin. It doesn't fit now when there's no impervious surfaces. You start putting those impervious surfaces in place, it's, it's just not going to work. There's going to be floods all the time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Goddard, and I live at 751 Rodney Drive, less than a half a mile from and along the same ridge line as the proposed Hawks Haven development. My husband and I purchased our property 18 months ago. We were drawn to the character of the community and its natural features, namely the beautiful sloping hills and the treetop canopies. However, within a few months, we learned about the danger these hills and its soil compose. In the back of our property, we have a wooded acre that is steeply sloped. We've worked with a certified arborist to maintain the health of the trees in our woods. Last year, we had to remove two large, mature sugar maple trees that began to uproot Last year, we had to remove two large, mature sugar maple trees that began to uproot and were threatening our property simply and for no other reason than soil erosion, increasingly extreme and intensive rains and winds and our slope till. Recently, the danger of poor soil quality at slow plot and subsequent erosion was reiterated again. One morning, I met with our arborist to talk about planting new trees. We met under a very healthy and mature 60-foot hickory tree at the front of our property, a tree that had zero signs of decline or disease. By 3:00 PM that same day, I drove up to find the hickory had fallen over onto our property and to our neighbor's driveway. Again, the culprit was intensified rains that we've received coupled with the soil erosion. Nature can often tell us something before it becomes apparent to us. The demise of our trees is telling us something about the degradation of the ridge, the increase in runoff from the intensified rain, the danger of the heightened wind, and the poor composition of the soil. While the examples given may be trees, I shudder to think if these were homes that had slipped away. As Nashville continues to receive more severe weather events in the form of torrential rain and wind, this very fragile and environmentally sensitive ecosystem becomes even more so. The Hoxhaven development seems completely out of character with West Nashville's community plan that quote strives to preserve the steep slopes, not only to retain the character of the area, but to reduce the impact of flooding in the future by slowing down and absorbing stormwater runoff during rain events to allow the development of Hoxhaven in light of the known dangers is a recipe for disaster. Thank you.
My name is Brian Jepson and I live at 751 Rodney with her. I'm going to talk a little bit about detrimental reliance. Well, before you think how boring it is, let's think about the last time you went looking for a house. What's the first thing you did? Well, you drew the neighborhood, right? You thought, oh, I like this. This is nice. These houses are spaced together or they're not spaced together. Well, I thought, look at these beautiful lots with the wildlife. We saw some chipmunks, which everybody seems to hate, but we like it because I didn't grow up with them. And so I detrimentally relied on this beautiful neighborhood maintaining the look. You know what? My detrimental reliance is justified because in fact, the West Nashville Community Plan talks about that. Tier 3 of the Neighborhood Maintenance says tier 3 Neighborhood Maintenance areas will experience some change over time, primarily when buildings are expanded or replaced. When this occurs, effort should be made to retain the existing character of the neighborhood. That's what we're here for, to maintain the existing character of the neighborhood. This new development comes to us as a sheep in, a wolf in sheep's clothing. It's kind of off the beaten path of Rodney, but if you look at these small, little pie-shaped lots, this is not what we have in our neighborhood. And this is going to be a very pathway of, clear pathway of destruction to the rest of the neighborhood. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Hi, good evening.
Hi, I'm Sandy Callahan. I'm at 732 Rodney. I think it's important to finish Steve's comments because he borders it. I'm at the top. If that area floods what it did this year, I can't get out. Eight to 12 times a year, Sawyer Drive, the portion of our yard between 801 and 805 Rodney and my yard along Harriswood Drive, each become wet weather floodways off the hill that I am forced to clear the extensive debris, untangle blockages in the creek around Rodney Drive, dig out a soil-filled drain that is unable to handle the volume of stormwater and debris coming off that hill, attempt to stabilize erosion around, along the Rodney Drive Creek, which will require metro repair. The result is an increasing degradation of driveways, creeks, yards, and foundations with a recent sizable increase in the amount of silt and soil runoff. I see nothing in the proposal that justifies the negative impact of developing four critical lot homes on a bedrock hillside with steep slopes and unstable soil. Instead, it further limits the natural water retention of the existing landscape, substitutes concrete for wood and open space, unnecessarily removes dozens of mature trees, and will actually increase stormwater runoff on a documented unstable hillside. Please act in the best interest of the neighborhood and the city and deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmen.
Hi, Tom Druffel. I'm the last part of the green team in District 23. I want to just highlight a few things because I hear your stomach's growling just a little bit here. I know the community plans in West Nashville, let me just highlight a few aspects that I think we've talked through. Under natural features, it says the region distinctive beauty, they cannot protect communities from flood damage and loss of life as learned in the flood of 2010. Under the green network, the network also includes sensitive natural features that can be disturbed or destroyed by development or that pose a health or safety risk when they are developed. And we're starting to hear that clearly through all this. And under hillside, all parcels identified as critical lots are placed on top of each other with each parcel at least 10 feet higher or lower than the adjacent lots. There are a few existing homes parcels that are created at the end of the cul-de-sac. However, the big difference is these existing parcels are placed on similar elevations. We've already heard about the water potential problems. The proposed development does not meet the rhythm and pattern of existing developments under T3NM character suburban neighborhood maintenance policies. You've heard some of the potential danger from the mudslides, the water, the control, and we would ask that you disapprove this recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And since the applicant's not here, we will go ahead and close the public hearing and I'm going to let the director start us off with some comments.
So, one of the earlier folks who testified raised a really fundamental issue that would inform our review and it has to do with property ownership that's included in this proposal. And so I was, Lisa or Lozlo, if you could pull up a map that shows the property. So essentially, we have a foundational legal problem with this application. And that is that you have a notarized letter from Edna Sawyer or someone who is speaking on her behalf, but it has been notarized, basically saying that this property owner would like to withdraw her name from the application. What I was doing over there was trying to figure out if the name was on our application and it was, as you see in your staff report. So on its face, we have a core legal problem here about what property should even be reviewed under this application. If we had received a proposal without her signature, we would have called this an incomplete application. And so what, and Lisa, if you could just show where generally this applicant's, or not this applicant, this property owner's general property line is located, I guess the, we can show you, but the summary is it's a critical part of this plan. And so what we were talking about is whether to, I'm sure many of you have comments and questions. I just want to make sure you have comments and questions based on a plan that we can actually review. And so we, this is unusual and I've not, this actually happened before in a meeting. So I was just trying to figure out procedurally the right way to advise you. And I think you've got a couple of options. At a very bare minimum, we need to indefinitely defer to clarify who or what land is under consideration. If indeed, the property that is identified under this notarized letter is removed, then I think the whole plan would fundamentally change. And so we would need to look at a new application. If you want to go further and recommend disapproval, I think you could entertain that. I'm just trying to figure out how to lead you there because I'm concerned that we're reviewing a plan that isn't, doesn't have a sound basis. And so things that I would do if you deferred this indefinitely would be to confirm that the ownership information is correct. I would have our legal team looking at this notarized letter and talking with probably the property owner who signed this notarized letter, just to confirm that you did indeed want to withdraw from the application, which is in our system right now, that this property owner originally did want to be included. And so figuring out how to course correct and pull that property out now is something we probably can't weigh on the spot. So you also heard a lot of other concerns and so you may want to entertain those. I just, I wanted you to have that information as a starting point as to sort of where we are. Any?
One quick question. So if it's, if it's an incomplete application, then basically we can take no action. We can't approve, we can't disapprove. Is that right?
Well, that's why I recommended at a minimum indefinite deferrals because you're sort of saying we're not, I mean, I think to our legal team, and again, this is new for us, this scenario. So if they wanted to disapprove it based on an incomplete application, that, is that something you would recommend? Or what are your thoughts having, kind of understanding the lay of the land?
Yeah, my initial thoughts after speaking to staff would be an indefinite deferral so we can really hash out what this letter means and what it means for the application. If, let's, for instance, this, this would never have made it to this body if the signature was missing probably, or it would have looked very different. So for me, and giving the applicant the benefit of the doubt, I think the indefinite deferral would be the best. There would be no prejudice involved in that. So that's what I would recommend.
Do you want me to try to explain? I can't point, but I can, but I can try to explain. Okay, so you see the gray almost rectangle labeled 009. That property is owned by the developer. So you'll see that there is sort of a triangular shaped piece of property that fills in that corner of the property. And then you'll see a little bump out on the south. Those are both of the pieces that are owned by the person that we received the letter from, Ms. Sawyer. Those are a part of the larger parcel 214. And so this application includes all of parcel 009 and then part of parcels 214. But it is that triangular piece that abuts where the road stubs and then the small bump out at the bottom, which is what is allowing for the completion of the turnaround.
Well, Stuart, would you like to share some comments since you're, you're an attorney?
I, I'm a little puzzled. I mean, it just doesn't make much sense given what we usually see. And, you know, I'm not sure what the practical differences are between an indefinite deferral and a rejection, except that the applicant would have to, if they wanted to come back, restart and pay more money. And what do we make of the fact that they're not here?
We find it peculiar.
I'm going to wait on Commissioner Johnson is what I'm going to do. I found that to be the best thing.
Other comments? Other commissioners?
Well, I think based on the information provided by the director and our legal counsel, best of course is indefinite deferral because where the bumped section and triangle section is current driveways proposed. And so that will make incomplete application. So for us to, we can disapprove based on the incomplete application, but I think effect is the same. So just to be safe side for us not to get legally liable, best thing for us to do is indefinite deferral.
And to confirm, then there would be some conversation with Edna Sawyer to determine if she still wants her name on this application.
Yeah, I think what I would do is consult with legal on the right steps if, and procedurally, what I'm thinking through is the application needs to change, the people on the application needs to change. How do I, how do we accomplish that in a legal way procedurally? And then what I would anticipate doing, assuming that the property owner continues to want to remove herself from this application, I would expect that if the developer wants to move forward, they would have to resubmit a new plan that only uses that property, that does not rely on this property to move forward. And so I think that we may be looking at a new application and then we would be reviewing that under the subdivision regulations again. And so I would urge the community to remain diligent and involved because there are standards that would allow for the subdivision of the property. That doesn't mean that this body or our staff would find that they met all of those conditions under a new application. That's hypothetical. So I would just say remain involved and when a new plan comes out, you know, we would review that plan under the regs. But that, yes, we, I'm going, we're going to have to figure out how to navigate this
Other, other comments from the commissioners? You look like you're thinking, Commissioner Clifton.
Not, not too much thinking, but, but just, you know, it's, this is an interesting area and a beautiful area and we've talked about it a lot in the past. And there are things we now know about what has and hasn't worked there. So it's not entirely clear to me that a new application would get very far for various reasons, but just, we might as well take the next best step and go along with the indefinite deferral. But I have some skepticism, dramatic amount of skepticism about this plan or anything that looks close to that.
Does anyone want to consider making?
Make a motion for indefinite deferral.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of the indefinite deferral?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, it is 6:40, so why don't we take a short break and then we will reconvene in about 10 minutes with item 29. We're going to reconvene the meeting. We are on to item 29. And before we got started with that, I wanted to see if there, it was on consent. Is that correct, Lisa? Or on the tentative consent?
It was. This one does still need to be presented.
Okay. Okay. Well, then we'll go forward with item 29.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Amelia Lewis and I will be presenting item 29 tonight. The request is a preliminary SP to permit a mixed use development. The staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The site is approximately six and a half acres located on the south side of Buena Vista Pike, west of the intersection of Buena Vista Pike and West Trinity Lane. The site is comprised of five contiguous parcels shown on the screen shaded in gray. The rear property line of the site abuts the Cumberland River. Existing and future land uses within the area include multifamily residential and mixed use developments. Immediately adjacent to the site, over at parcels 004 and 005 on the screen are the Riverside Development, which was recently approved, I believe, in the May 11th Planning Commission meeting. The proposed plan is shown on the screen. The plan is somewhat regulatory in nature with the exception of the planned roadways, which were shown in the Haynes Trinity Small Area Plan as a way to improve and enhance mobility within this area. So a proposed 59-foot wide collector street is shown east-west through the site with a proposed local street section providing access from Buena Vista Pike to the interior portion of the site. The proposed plan divides the, divides the site into two districts. So the northern district, District 1, is located up along Buena Vista Pike and permits up to 10,000 square feet of non-residential uses and a maximum of 280 multifamily residential units. District 2 is limited to a maximum of 20 multifamily residential units. Because the site is regulatory in nature, there are additional standards related to height, orientation, and architectural standards within the plan to kind of help guide. height orientation and architectural standards within the plan to kind of help guide future development within those districts. So there are two policies on the site, urban mixed-use corridor and conservation. The conservation policy is in place along the southern portion of the site, up against the riverbank. Additional conservation policy is applied through the site due to stream buffers and slopes. This area, the conservation area, is largely unaffected by the proposed development due to the proposed buffers around District 2. The east-west collector road does cross over a stream buffer, however, the policy guidance indicates that where there's a policy calling for more intense development, there should be a balance between conservation, as well as enhancing the infrastructure in the area, and that some disturbance may be permissible to achieve other goals, such as broader connectivity through the area. The second policy on the site is the urban mixed-use corridor policy, which is shown on the site, the entirety of the site, in that stripy pattern. The intent of this policy is to enhance urban mixed-use corridors with a greater mix of high-density residential and mixed-use developments. The proposed development is consistent with the policy to provide high-density residential along the corridor with an opportunity for mixed-use development. The proposed plan strengthens the mobility network by providing new street connections and provides improved pedestrian facilities along Buena Vista Pike. The proposed District 1 provides the mixed-use and high-intensity residential, as called for by the policy, whereas District 2 steps down the density, given the reduced building area available between the constraints of the planned roadway and the river. Staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. I would like to note that you should have a memo on your desk, I guess, your place, showing some revised conditions from Metro Parks related to their conditions that were within the published staff report. I believe this item is primarily being heard tonight for the applicant to discuss two of those conditions related to the timing of construction and the removal of a north-south connector for the Greenway, which was not shown on the adopted plans. Planning is okay with the two of these, but the applicant is here as well and will be happy to discuss these.
So, I'm sorry, just to clarify, Amelia, forgive me. So the memo should say item 29, not 17, just so, just to make sure you have those, this one in front of you? And so just to clarify, the conditions are what Parks sent over today, and what you're suggesting is, we're likely to hear from the applicant that there's a concern with two of these conditions. In staff's opinion, you are recommending amending these two conditions, and that that is what is under consideration with the commission. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so right now, what's before the commission is all of the conditions in your book, plus what you have in the memo.
The memo replaces the ones that are in the staff report.
For Parks and Greenways, right. So all of those conditions with the amended conditions from Parks and Greenways, and you're hearing from the applicant about two of those conditions, and you're just telling us in advance that you're okay, staff is okay with what the applicant is suggesting in terms of revisions? Does that make sense to everybody? Because that was a little confusing. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is the applicant here?
Yes, the applicant is this time. And I have a handout which Amelia knows about. I'm David Kleinfeldter, the firm of Reno and Kavanaugh. Address is 424 Church Street. I do represent the applicant Rhythm Development. This memo is a little weird. I've edited it with X's because things have been fluid. The whole reason we're here is that, first of all, I really appreciate working with staff. We've had a lot of time crunches, not only because with the conditions that are in question here came in at the last second, but also because you kind of have a council that's finishing up its term, and so that there's, we really can't have this deferred. So we couldn't defer it to work through it. We have no objections whatsoever to planning's recommendations, everything about the, I mean, it meets the plan, they obviously agreed it meets the plan, so we're all good with that. We got, at the very last minute, actually, they only appeared for the first time in the staff report. As you probably know, the process is, you file your application, it gets circulated, all the departments provide comments. No comments were provided from Parks until they were in the staff report, which got less than a week ago, I believe, usually Friday, maybe even a little later. Two pages of conditions, so there were some problems with those. We didn't have time to work everything out. What you had from Parks was, we finally got on the phone with them yesterday, discussed it, thought we had a few agreements, were up last night editing their comments or their conditions, provided that to them this morning at about 10:30. They really didn't accept almost anything we revised. That's why I'm still here. So that, but, they did change a few things, and so you have those new conditions, you know, that's what you will be voting on absent, if you are willing to do what I'm asking for, which is in that memo. So we do appreciate Parks talking with us, and these are critical issues for the developer. They're not, you know, world-changing issues, but these are critical for this developer. So we're gonna take the unusual step of asking you to say, we approve this without these two conditions from the Parks Department. And first, I want to be clear, Rhythm is 100% devoted to Greenways. If any of you don't know anything about me, you know, I biked here today, and I'll bike home from here today. So we're all about Greenways and those multimodal connections. And Rhythm will do anything that's in part of a metro plan. Collector Street's part of the metro plan, no objections, we'll build that. As a matter of fact, I'll discuss in a moment, we'll build the timing when District 1 is built. We're not saying we need to wait until District 2 is built. And the Greenway that goes along the river, agreeing to build that, but I am gonna ask about some timing. So the problem is, though, that Parks added some ad hoc things that aren't part of any plans. And Metro staff, really, you have to stick with a plan, there has to be a reason for these things, rather than just, yeah, this would be great. So initially, they did require a second east-west Greenway up where the Collector Street is. We worked with them, and they agreed that what you'll see in the new comments about a multimodal pathway. So we were able to work through that one. Because that pathway will provide the bike-ped connections that are needed. So Parks has also required, however, and it's in your condition, and you'll see that it's on the little memo, one north-south connection that's just not part of any open space or Parks plan. It's not in the plans, and it's gonna take a significant part of that District 2 parcel. That District 2 parcel's very topographically challenged. There's some question among our team as to whether it can be done with an ADA or not, but we think maybe it could be, but it's just not part of the plan. The plan is the Greenway along the river. Plan was not the second Greenway parallel to it, nor a separate connector between them. The Riverside project that you've seen has a pretty significant Greenway network proposed. It's 1,000% larger than our property, so there's room for a pretty extensive Greenway network that would allow people from the Collector Street to get down to the riverfront Greenway. So that's part of it, and that's number one, is we're asking that you remove the north-south Greenway. They don't really have authority to ask for things that aren't in a plan or part of a code, or you have to have a basis for it. I used to irritate, frankly, some of the departments when I was at planning, I'd say, so, can you show me the code section where you're saying you can do this? And make departments angry. I know it's hard to believe. But, so the second part is the timing of the Greenway that does go along the river. We're great with building the Greenway along the river. There's supposed to be a Greenway all the way up and down the river here, and the Riverside folks, I believe, are building it, too. It's proposed to go through the building next door, which I've heard people refer to as MDHA. I think it's actually a pilot. I think that's why it shows up in the deed records as MDHA, as the vice chair is well familiar with how all that works. So it'll someday go through there, happy to build it. But, the current condition that you have in front of you, originally, the condition said, you have to build the Greenways with your first building permit, which would have meant when we build apartments, 280 maximum are approved for District 1. You would have to start building a Greenway down by the river, even though District 2, essentially, can think of it as Phase 2, wouldn't be constructed till later. There's two problems with that. Number one is cost. You're gonna have to go in to a piece of property where you're not excavating for buildings, you're not clearing, you're not doing anything, and get all your equipment down and build a Greenway next to the river. But also, you're gonna denude the hillside, you're gonna remove trees to get to grade and get down there. And so you're gonna have this piece of property when it's not yet ready to be developed. It is, it was acquired as a separate parcel, if you can look on the actual area map. So it was acquired to be developed, primarily with townhomes is the current, that's what's approved, I think, as part of this SP. So we're asking that you change the time, oh, I'm sorry, that they originally said with the first permit. The conditions you have in front of you now say with the 100, the permit for the 101st unit, which is just problematic from a number of standpoints, because it's a multifamily building. If it's 280 units, then it's gonna be on day one, because we don't get separate permits for every multifamily unit. So that doesn't work. We're asking, and we think it's entirely appropriate, to say that construction of that Greenway should occur when District 2 is developed. So those are the two primary requirements, requests. I do want to point out, we really don't want a deferral. If there's problems, we'd ask you to pass it, and we'll try, the council member's been very supportive, I think she just emailed the commission saying she was supportive. But we really would hope you would recommend approval with, and I tried to give language, because I know it's very hard for the commission to kind of come up with something when you wanna make a motion with some special language. That's why I gave you this sort of janky memo with things marked out of it, because it's been fluid. So I do have engineer, owner, rep, Andrew Wiseman, and the guy I've been talking to, what's his name? Alex. I've been talking to a different one. He's out of town, sorry. But Alex is here with Rhythm, so if you have any questions for the engineer or developer, they're available. Or me.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
We'll hold back your two minutes for rebuttal as needed. Is there anyone speaking in support of item, I don't even know, item 29? Anyone speaking in opposition? Okay, then I guess there's no need to use your two minutes of rebuttal, and we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioner Clifton, you wanna start us?
I don't have a lot to say, except it certainly makes sense, as he explained it, that we would make those modifications, which would be helpful to me, since I'm tired, for someone on the planning staff to summarize what they think they're okay with.
I think that if you look at this memo from Reno and Kavanaugh, if the commission is generally okay with what was presented by the applicant, you would say, we're recommending approval of this project with all conditions, including the two here, and I would reference those conditions, numbers one and number three, and I would read those into the record. And I think the first one basically removes the requirement for the north-south Greenway, which isn't, and I think we would agree, part of any plan that we're aware of. And then the third one would be to revise the note requiring the timing of the multimodal pathway. So they're going to deliver that, there's just a concern about phasing as described. And so we are, we would be accepting those two changes to the Park and Greenways' conditions.
Right. That's what I would hope we would be doing. So that's where I would be.
I'm happy to say that more formally, if the commission is done.
Why don't we find the condition, I know one of them is condition 40, and on their, on the Greenway, and the other one is, so I believe the proposed one, to remove the Greenway requirements for the north-south, would be modifying the condition 25, as shown on the memo by staff. And then note three is as it refers to note 40. Out of curiosity, I know we've approved a lot of projects with Greenways in the past, I've never seen three pages of conditions. Is that, is that new with our Greenway projects?
We're continuing to, we're continuing to work with all of the departments on the condition development.
Okay. Any other comments to, yes, Councilman Whitaker?
Thank you, Vice Chair, for recognizing me, and I really appreciate this coming up, because I've got some riverfront proposals, where I've been working with the community for, since January, to get some ideas on that. We've had some similar, I guess, uncertainty from Metro Parks about what they would require versus what is, what it makes sense to build. And really, I would like to maybe address or see if legal counsel could at least begin to advise us, because I think that this will, this will come up on other cases, because we are doing a lot of riverfront development these days. But, you know, we had a recent court decision on the sidewalk legislation that Metro Council had, that we still have not yet had a legal opinion from Metro Council, or from the Law Department about, did that invalidate the whole thing, or just some of it, or in what circumstance? We haven't received that opinion yet from the Law Department. But it's something that there's a lot of discussion about, and it's my understanding that that court opinion from the Sixth Circuit really referenced the Nolan-Dolan standard repeatedly and extensively. And so with Nolan-Dolan, as I understand it, because I'm not an attorney, but in order to take someone's private property for a public purpose, there must be a nexus, meaning it has to be close to or attached to the parcel, but also proportionality. And I think for some of these, you can begin to see a little bit of a nexus because of where the property is located. I think the point about there not necessarily being a pre-existing plan, sometimes what we've done as a city, if we have a pre-existing plan, is we'll do a participation agreement on it, where Metro was planning on doing something anyway, the private development comes along, and we hash out between Metro and the parties, like what is their share versus what's our share. But sometimes if something isn't really in a plan at all, or isn't fully vetted, it's more difficult to do that. And so with that, I'm just wanting to see if I can begin, maybe get a little bit of feedback today, won't require a definitive one, but how would the Law Department kind of assess that Nolan-Dolan standard to this, and to what extent do you feel like these conditions, I mean, if an applicant agrees to conditions, then that's one thing, but if the applicant does not agree to the conditions, then it seems like there's legal exposure, potentially. So just wanted to begin at least a little bit of legal feedback on that, since I think this is gonna be a really frequent topic.
Okay, so that's a, that's a pretty loaded question, but I appreciate it. So, we haven't gotten around to all the departments yet, you're correct. We are doing our best. I mean, the bottom line is, 172120 is dead, and for those members of the audience, that's provision of sidewalks. So from a perspective of, you come to Nashville, you trigger that code section, Metro is not enforcing that section, so set that aside. So what does that leave you? It leaves you with, well, when could you have requested a sidewalk before that existed, right? And what the court said is, you look at the Nolan-Dolan standards to make that determination. However, that determination is usually hinged or pinged, for lack of better words, if we're conditioning something on it, like a building permit. So if you come to us and you say, hey, I want a building permit, my property is properly zoned, I have everything I need, and we say, eh, no, you can't do that unless you have a sidewalk. So that's a taking, right? Because we've conditioned something by right that you could do on your property on giving us something. So, so that's a taking. All right, now, that's one side of it. Now, you have the other side, you have SPs, right, where they're coming to you and saying, hey, I don't have a right to do this on this piece of property, I'm asking you to let me do this, and in exchange, I'll throw in a sidewalk, I'll do things like that. So it's a very case-property-specific inquiry. Generally, SPs are not gonna be reviewed in the same way as you're gonna review a home that's already been zoned correctly, that's coming in for a building permit, that's coming in from an otherwise valid permit that they could pull without us having any say-so whatsoever on what they do on their property, right? It's really those instances where, by right, by right you can come in, and we have no right to say anything to you. We can't say boo, right? Again, SPs are a little bit different, upzones are a little bit different. If a house were to come in and we were to make a determination, I'm saying we, broadly, Metro, that for some reason there's a tremendous amount of foot traffic on there, we could then look at that nexus element, and we would say, is there a nexus here between requiring it, like, for a better example, when a developer comes in and they put in a huge development, but the stormwater or the water pipes are tiny, like, what did that developer do? It taxed our, it made our infrastructure... It taxed our, it made our infrastructure, it's going to put a lot of taxing on our infrastructure. So what do we do? We normally ask the developer to make it a little bit bigger so it accommodates their development. So it's not an easy question to answer because what the case basically said is you have to look at each property as an individual piece of property. And that's what they didn't like about the zoning ordinance, about the sidewalk ordinance. I don't know if that answered your question.
Well, I think for this one in particular, I mean, again, going back to this idea of constructing a greenway that to a portion, a portion of the property that is not currently actually being developed at all and sort of making it contingent that like you can't build the part up there until you do this entire system. It's not phased, it's not, how is it proportional to the phasing of development and things like that? That's still a question that some of us in the council office are working with a lot, are trying to get our arms around because we do have a lot of SPs that we're all working on right now. And so we're trying to get some guidance about what is a reasonable ask from the departments versus what is not and what we should potentially, you know, I mean, if you can get someone to agree to it, that's always great. But in terms of what things are possible to require or not or when, I think in particular for this one, the phasing of it is really a critical feature. And I'm very sympathetic to it for that reason. But I, like I said, this is helpful for all of my council colleagues who are watching right now.
Right, and for SPs in particular, I think for an SP, like I said, you're not, you don't have a right to what you're asking for. So for that, that nexus is not necessarily required. And so, you know, then it would come to what's reasonable. Obviously, like, we would love to see a nexus. I think that's the correct way to do it. I think that's the correct way that it should happen. But I think when you're coming in and you're asking for something that you're not entitled to by right, that's not necessarily the way you would look at it.
But the sky's not the limit either, right? That's a, that's a, a very non-legal way of saying that.
I think to answer perhaps a question, we seek some predictability, both from the community as well as a property owner, as to what they can reasonably anticipate when developing the land. And so I think in this case, because the greenway extension wasn't something that had been previously expressed, we saw that, we see the applicant's proposal there to be generally appropriate. And so I think there's always going to be a moment where Metro, any department, including Planning, has to demonstrate that an improvement is responding to a demand. And so because that hasn't been necessarily articulated here, you know, we think this is a reasonable change. But you'll note that there are 41 other conditions that are going to be imposed here that the applicant and Planning agreed to. And so I think we're accomplishing most of the goals that we would all agree to.
Interesting discussion. Do you want me to restate the, what I think we're doing? Well, I want to make sure, other comments? Anybody else have other comments and otherwise? Okay, thank you.
Yes, Director. So I think we're recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions, including the amending conditions 25 and 40 in the staff memo and in the staff memo dated June 8th, 2023, and replacing those conditions with the following, removing requirements for the proposed north-south greenway or path. And the third, and the second is revising note 40 to require the multimodal pathway along the Collector Street to be constructed with first permitting building in District 1 and Riverfront Greenway to be constructed with the first permitted building in District 2. And I think if you're making the motion, you can just reference what I said.
Okay, so we're modifying 25. Modifying 25 and so we're modifying both, we're not actually deleting either.
So I was going to make, now that's been restated, I was going to make a motion that we accept the staff's recommendation to approve with conditions with the modifications as read by Director Kemp.
And to disapprove without all conditions.
And to disapprove without all conditions.
It's a very nice motion. Do we have a second?
Just one clarifying question.
Oh, can I, can we do a second and then discussion?
Yeah, sorry. So we are modifying the north-south connection, a greenway connection to connect to the previously approved Riverside SP. So Riverside SP will be connecting a greenway along the Cumberland, correct? So they are not connecting somewhere alongside with north-south. So either way, this greenway and Riverside greenway will be connected.
Correct.
Okay, so just wanted to make you sure because it's not connected somewhere in the middle, so there's no connection. So that's what I'm trying to understand because the way 20, condition 25 is written is kind of a little weird. So I just wanted to make you sure each greenway will be connected properly.
Let it be clarified in the record that it is our expectation that this greenway will connect with the Riverside greenway. Just neither document has been technically designed yet, but that will be our expectation. Thank you.
And there would at some point be access from Buena Vista Pike down to the, down to the greenway.
Yeah, clarifying. But just concern is that that property that's not highlighted is not owned.
Hold on one sec, we need to, we need to call on you to answer my question.
Can you ask me to answer?
No, no, yes, I would like the applicant to approach to answer my question.
The greenway will connect because it connects to that multimodal pathway, which is actually up in that middle part. And that's the Riverside is doing, everybody's doing the greenway along the river. We can't do that little piece. I just want to make sure it was clear because we don't own that other piece of property. But it will connect via the multimodal because they have a network that connects there and of course, the whole riverfront. So yes, it'll connect, but I wanted to make sure it was clear that it's not the riverfront that's connecting.
Right, everyone is doing the riverfront that has a develop, the two projects that have development under our review. So thank you for clarifying. Does that make sense? Okay, but the piece as previously stated that they don't own, can't connect. But there are multiple multimodal paths between the projects that will connect. And we will put it in the record that our expectation is the greenway is proposed and under review. It's connecting if a multimodal path is proposed and under review, it will connect.
Motion second, any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. All right, we are on to case 31. Is there anyone here that's still in opposition to 31, item 31? Which is, this is, once again, hold on. It's Brentwood Chase Project. Nope. If we don't have anyone here in opposition, I would entertain a motion from the commission to put this back on the consent agenda. It was previously on a candidate consent agenda.
I'm going to move it back to the consent agenda.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries and we will move item 31 back to the consent agenda. So that takes us to item 33. We would ask, if there are anyone here. Oh, is there anyone here and still in opposition to item 33? Yes, okay. We will hear item 33.
This is item 33. It is a request rezon from R15 to SP to permit 39 residential units to approximately 13 and a half acre site. It's located on the southwest side of Pennington Bend Road. It's adjacent to Riley Parkway. The site is vacant and densely forested. About 10 acres of the site is within flood year, is 100-year flood plain. Staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. The zoning is one and two-family residential. This is the proposed SP. The plan proposes 39 multifamily residential units that are accessed from a private drive, 21 units front onto Pennington Bend Road and the remaining 18 units front onto internal open space. All units have a two-car garage and service parking is also provided. Pedestrian access is provided with interior sidewalks that connect to the proposed multi-use path on Pennington Bend. As previously noted, the site is mostly encumbered with flood plain. The proximate area covered by flood plain is highlighted in blue on this slide. As proposed, project site is clustered outside of the flood plain and is only impacting about three and a quarter acres of the site. With that said, some disturbance is necessary in order to provide roadway improvements along Pennington Bend. Policy suburban neighborhood evolving and conservation. The evolving policy is intended to create enhanced suburban neighborhood, residential areas, neighborhoods with more housing choices, improve pedestrian bicycle and vehicle connectivity and moderate density development patterns with moderate setbacks and spacing between buildings. Following areas are developed with creative thinking, environmentally sensitive development techniques to balance the increased growth of density within the impact of the streams and rivers. Conservation policy reflects the flood plain on the property. Staff finds that the proposed SP is consistent with the policies at this location. The plan provides additional housing choice with appropriate density given the surrounding development pattern. Plan also proposes to improve Pennington Bend Road along the entire parcel frontage with a multi-use path. The plan is also centered to the flood plain and focuses the development outside of the flood plain. In conclusion, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all.
Thank you very much. So we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Good evening.
Come on. So I'm Roy Dale with Dale and Associates. Michael Garrigan with my office actually worked on this development. He's not here today, so I'm going to try to take his place. So for all the reasons that Jason cited, this is a good development. It is in neighborhood evolving policy. This stays out of the conservation policy. This is my former council district, so I'm very familiar with this area. The area that's in conservation to remain on this property is, stays wet all the time. And part of this plan that was put together is to provide a drainage system that extends all the way along Pennington Bend, all the way to Riley Parkway to provide ways for stormwater to leave the property and not stay in a wet condition like it is today. In addition, the applicant worked with the council member. The council member wanted to see a multimodal greenway built from this site all the way down to Riley Parkway. And it's about a quarter of a mile of 10-foot-wide multi-use path that's been actually built for the community. And that's something that the council member asked for. There was a community meeting on May the 23rd and most of the people that attended this meeting are in close proximity to the site. But I found today that there are a group of people that are here from Miami Avenue. So it's slightly remote from the property itself. They have some concerns, which I'm sure they will present to the commission. I think you have a letter of support from the council member for the zoning. But knowing this council member is a very good council member, once there's a recommendation made today, and I hope you make a recommendation of approval based upon the policy, this council member will obviously meet with these constituents again prior to public hearing to try to address their concerns and see if there's anything that he can do or that we can do to add conditions to the plan. There may already be a lot of conditions on the plan that this group simply don't know about. I did spend some time talking to them, they're a good group of people. I know some of them, some of them were there when I was a council member. So I would ask for you to just listen to what they say. I'll save two minutes for a rebuttal and hopefully we'll come up with a positive conclusion as a result. Thank you.
Thank you. And you'll have two minutes for your rebuttal. Okay, I'll open up this item. Is there anyone here speaking in support? Okay, anyone here speaking in opposition? And if you will help us to expedite this by coming forward and lining up so we can call on you. And as I think you've all observed, you have two minutes and start with your name and address.
Good afternoon, my name is Mike Murdock. My address is 2541 Miami Avenue. I have about seven different concerns. I don't have the time to go through all that. I'm going to hit two. First one is drainage. The property that's in question is in a bend, a Pennington Bend itself, Pennington Bend Road. During inclement weather, the water gathers there and gets into the roadway. And even on light rain, it's a quarter of a way into the travel lane itself. On heavy rains, you can get into half and three-quarters of the lane on the south side of the roadway. That makes people go into the other lane, it gets to be quite unsafe. And even if they try to improve the water, it has nowhere to go right now. There's a significant amount of natural retention just to the east of the property that when it fills up, the water drains down into this area and just literally floods it because the drainage system down there is inadequate. If the developer comes down into there, developing this without significantly improving the drainage system, Metro has a liability, the developer has a liability for any accidents that occurs on that street because they made it worse. The other item that I really wanted to address is on the plan, there's a subdivision line that says, I can't, proposed lot line. That's effectively dividing those wetland and the flood plain from the high and dry area. If you do that and you create two lots, the property that has all the housing no longer is, there's not a hardship there. There's no reason that they would need to combine 39 lots into that one area. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Jack Chapel, I live at 2527 Miami Avenue. And I have for about two years, I moved from Gallatin, I had a little farm there. I went into the master closet in my master bedroom and I found this written on the wall. "I love this house, I fell in love in this house. And now if you'll excuse me, I must be traveling on. May God bless you as much as he has blessed us here on the river. Marty Stewart." This was Marty Stewart's house. This development has the potential to fundamentally change for the worse the daily lives of the current residents and neighbors in this historic neighborhood. Further, it's indicative of a piecemeal development that's occurring along Pennington Bend. The traffic, loss of natural environment, danger due to water discharge and flooding that's been redirected from these developments. This development online is billed as 34 units or 39 units on, pardon me, 30 acres. I may have this wrong, but what has happened is the developer has squished all of these units, all of this property, onto four units, onto four acres. So you have almost 40 units with parking and everything else being squished into four acres. And the accessways in and out on narrow, narrow Pennington Bend with two neighborhood streets intersecting immediately adjacent to or very adjacent to this development. It's unreasonable and it is a bad project. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, you'll have a few minutes.
Mike Angerl, I live on 2124 Wooddale Lane. It's actually on the map that you see there if you go northwest as it's oriented there. Pennington Bend basically runs into our street. We own the property that's crossed on the curve of Pennington Bend from the wetlands that you see in there. My main concern at this point, among many others, is the drainage. You'll read in probably the proposal that they plan on providing good drainage. The water can't go anywhere. It's going to end up on Pennington Bend. Right now, they cannot go under Riley Parkway and they can't come across my property or our property on Miami to get it to the Cumberland River. It's not happening. So that's the main concern. Secondly, well, for me, is actually just the density. This is a two-lane road, it's pretty tight, folks. And making that turn, like Mike said earlier, is not safe at all. It literally just collects water. It's a lake on a turn, folks. So that would have to be fixed. High density, I wouldn't go for, just too many people right now. That's it in a nutshell, there's many other things, but thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition? Wants to speak? Okay, if not, I'll allow two minutes for your rebuttal.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. So this is a 13-acre piece of property, and the homes are being clustered in the area outside of the floodplain, outside of what would be a conservation area. The houses are elevated four feet, just like all the houses in Abington Park, and none of those were flooded in 2010. So part of this plan, again, is to create a stormwater system along Pennington Bend because it does. When it's wet, that portion of the road down that goes under that bridge, it's wet. And so there's a proposal here in this part of this plan to actually extend a storm drainage system along entire northerly part of Pennington Bend, go under the road, and then actually discharge through property that's owned by Metro down on the on the river so that this area can finally drain like it doesn't drain now. And that's that's actually part of the plan itself. I saw this lot line that was drawn on the plan. I don't understand that. This is one SP. It needs to be one parcel. I think that that area might, that the wet area might be put into a conservation easement, but it's all one development. It's all one parcel. It needs to be one parcel. And I'm sure the council member will ensure that that's the case if there's any confusion about that. I've told these constituents again that they do have a great council member, and a lot of the questions they have, I think, have been answered. For whatever reason, they just were not included in this community meeting. Maybe it's because they are in that little group along the river. It's quite unique down there. It's a lot of fun going down there, and it's just a different setting, different type of folks. You saw some of them were flip flops. It's great. I laughed about that today with them. And so they're good people. So I think that the plan meets, it's in neighborhood evolving, it's the main thing, and I would hope you just follow the planning commission staff's conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll declare the public hearing closed. And Commissioner Henley, would you like to start us off tonight?
Yeah, I would. I think a couple of things that came up, and the proposed lot line was one of the questions that I had. So I'm sure we can get clarification on that one.
Sure. They have noted it that way, but this was reviewed as as one parcel. It is one parcel. And the area that is outside, and it may have been noted that way, to denote the area that is intended to be open space. And so other words, sort of everything that's within that that proposed lot line is all to be maintained as as open space except for a walking path. That would be along Pennington Bend, which is something that the council member's been working on getting connected throughout the area. So it's, it likely was just to denote the difference between the area that was to be developed and the area that's to be maintained as open space per the SP.
And I did hear this during the presentation from the applicant, but I'm curious, in the conditions, as described, it seems like there is a proposed solution for dealing with a lot of the drainage issues that are on site. And maybe I just didn't see it in the conditions, but is there a specific reference to that that we're getting from Water Services or?
So stormwater has indicated approval and that it will need to meet the stormwater regulations. And of course, at this time, we don't have actual construction drawings because those wouldn't take place until if this passed at final site plan. But they would be required to meet any stormwater regulations or requirements and not increase runoff beyond what currently exists today.
Yeah, I just, when I heard it in the presentation, first of all, it sounds great. I know we've had other proposals that have come before us to talk about improving public infrastructure to deal with flooding. It was just mentioned that, and I was trying to figure out exactly where that outflow was, but it seemed like there is an identified location with Water Services. So I do think that would be a great outcome for this. I mean, it seems to me like the SP is adopting our principles of conservation. I mean, I think we would, where we are seeing the development proposed is where we would want it and we would guide it. And it's like the current zoning would allow for density approximately this much. So I guess maybe it'd be helpful for me to just understand, if we weren't doing this as an SP and they brought this forward, I mean, what would kind of be their guidance on how to configure the site layout?
Sure. So if they came in with a subdivision, they would have to do a conservation subdivision given the amount of floodplain. Conservation subdivision is required if you are over a certain size and at least 10% of your site is within areas that are that have to be conserved or that are targeted to be conserved. But, I'm sorry, 20%, but you're only required to conserve a certain amount. And so in other words, if this came in as a subdivision, there's a minimum amount that they would have to conserve, but then they could disturb the other areas that are outside of that minimum amount. The amount that you conserve is directly related to the size of the lots that you're allowed to get. And so in other words, you're able to reduce lot sizes based on the amount of land that you conserve. And so there could be a couple of different approaches. There could be one where you conserve the minimum amount possible, have larger lots, but then you're disturbing floodplain. Or you could conserve all of the floodplain and have much smaller sort of individual lots with public infrastructure. And so the exact number would be sort of maxed down. It's what's in the staff report, but it would all be sort of determined on which approach that they take. But there is an approach under the conservation subdivision that could result in disturbance of floodplain area.
I knew there was no way I could describe that that way, but my understanding of our conservation guidance is that. And so to me, I feel like what's presented here in the SP is about as good as you could get with deciding to still be or approach that that density. I think, you know, from looking at it from a functionality standpoint, you know, one of the things that I thought about was just Pennington Bend, again, the narrowness of the road. I think it's, you know, I'm looking at two entry points. They're both designed to be wide enough to have in and out. The site itself seems to, you know, if you do have kind of multiple people leaving at once, you know, the queuing happens on the site, not on Pennington Bend. I think the, I think for me, that gives some assurances of the the traffic flow impact. And again, just noting that there would be other ways that we could get this level of density in this area. I think this is, this is probably the appropriate solution, and we have some great opportunities of working with two of our other metro departments at least, and then, of course, the other guidance that we have to be able to hopefully provide a solution to some flooding as well as open space and greenway access. I'm in support of the plan as presented.
Thank you very much. Do other commissioners have comments, thoughts to share on this item? Seeing none, is anyone interested in making a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation, to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion carries. Okay, thank you. I know we have people here for item 33, so we will proceed with that. 35. I'm getting off.
Hi, I'm Donald Anthony with the Planning Department, and this is item 35 on your agenda. This is a request to rezone to SP to permit a mixed use development with 385 multifamily residential units on 3.72 acres located at 800 Main Street. Staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. The property consists of a single parcel, which is currently zoned MUGA. Additionally, the property lies within the Gallatin Pike Urban Design Overlay District, the Urban Zoning Overlay District, and the MDHA East Bank Redevelopment District. The property currently contains a multi-tenant commercial building, and a portion of the property is used for storage of rental trucks and equipment. A variety of zoning districts lie adjacent to the property. These include MUGA, MULA, CL, and RM40. And likewise, the surrounding parcels include a variety of land uses, including commercial, institutional, single-family residential, and multifamily residential. The applicable policies for the subject property are urban mixed-use corridor or T4CM and conservation. The conservation policy, which you can see in green sort of toward the middle of the site, applies to the small portion of the property where the slopes are between 15% and 25%. The T4CM policy is intended to enhance urban mixed-use corridors by encouraging a greater mix of higher-density residential and mixed-use development. Characteristics of the T4CM policy include pedestrian-friendly, multimodal corridors, high-density residential, commercial, and mixed-use buildings, and urban forum with buildings built to the back edge of the sidewalk and minimal spacing between buildings, and parking located behind or beside buildings and accessed from side streets or alleys. Buildings in the T4CM policy area are typically three to five stories in height, though greater height may be appropriate at intersections, in tiered centers, and along priority corridors. The proposed SP, which is on the screen now, would consist of three buildings built in two phases, or as they're labeled here, two zones. The SP would permit up to 385 multifamily residential units and other uses as permitted by the MUGA zoning district. A three-level parking garage would be located along the south side of the property and would lie internal to the site. The garage would be built into the existing slope on the site. Access to the garage would be provided from two existing alley connections from Main Street, which are shown on either side of the parcel. The plan does include green spaces or plazas between the buildings. The SP application includes multiple improvements to the public street network as required by the Major and Collector Street Plan. Approximately 14 and a half feet of right-of-way would be dedicated on Main Street to allow for a bikeway, a 10-foot sidewalk, and a future enhanced we-go bus stop. Right-of-way would also be dedicated on Woodland Street to allow for broader eight-foot sidewalks. The three proposed buildings would all have heights of four stories on the Main Street frontage with a 10-foot step back above the fourth floor. Building 1B, which is shown on the screen in the center, would have a total height of seven stories. And I did pass out a memo. The staff report incorrectly noted six stories, and there was a condition related to six stories. The memo clarifies that there's a portion of the building toward the rear that actually does hit seven stories. So please refer to the memo for that. Building 2, which is the tallest building there, would have a height of up to 10 stories. All of the buildings would be limited to two stories on the Woodland Street frontage. The images on the screen show perspectives from Main Street at the top and then from Woodland Street at the bottom. These images give a better idea of how the building heights would be perceived at street level. The site slopes from south to north, so that makes the proposed building heights a little bit less imposing on the Woodland Street frontage. Staff evaluated the proposed SP in light of the T4CM policy and found the proposed SP to be consistent with the policy. This SP would include a mix of uses, including high-density residential. Commercial uses that are permitted here are the same ones that would be permitted in the MUGA zoning district. And the proposed residential density is about 103 units per acre. The SP would support pedestrian-friendly, multimodal corridor by dedicating right-of-way for a bikeway, broad sidewalk, and we-go transit stop along Main Street. The SP does include buildings built to the back of the sidewalk, supporting the urban forum envisioned in the policy. And finally, the site is located in a first-tier center and on a designated multimodal corridor where greater building height is supported by the policy. Because the SP, proposed SP aligns with the T4CM policy, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll open up the public hearing. And is the applicant here? Good evening.
Good evening.
You'll have 10 minutes, and I'm going to withhold two minutes for rebuttal and start with your name and address.
Nick Dryden with Dryden Architecture and Design, 2520 White Avenue, 37204. Just want to thank the commission for sticking around, as always, and doing all your good work. And thank Councilman Withers for your support through this process. And I'd just like to kind of take the first couple of minutes of this to just paint a picture of this project from our perspective. When we were first approached by the client, they really wanted to do something special and unique to Nashville, but also respectful of the neighborhood, and really respond to this very dynamic condition of the site. Between Woodland Street and Main Street, there's about a 30-foot vertical elevation change across the slope. So you're immediately addressed with two very different dynamic urban conditions, one relating more to woodland, one relating more to the commercial corridor of Main Street. I just want to emphasize and highlight several of the project design attributes and concepts. I personally like, and am attracted to smaller projects, but when we're approaching a larger project like this, we tend to break a larger project like this into smaller projects because they tend to be more approachable and more sensitive at a pedestrian scale. And you can see with this site plan, the project is essentially broken up into three smaller buildings, three small buildings with a lot of interstitial space between the buildings. The main reason to do that is, one, to create some through-block passeos or pedestrian ways through connecting Woodland and Main Street, but also to enhance the livability and the quality of the buildings and the spaces within to encourage more daylight and to encourage more airflow. As we all see throughout Nashville, a lot of the trends and tendency for development is to really maximize the usable square footage available for a site. We are not asking for additional FAR on this particular site. There are a range of building heights across the site, and that's why there is one particularly taller building so that there can be quite a variety of massing and interest to the to the site and to the architecture. The other highlight is to really emphasize the sustainability. We are shooting for lead gold for this project, and one way we're doing that is by using a construction type of mass timber, which is quite unique to this particular project I'd like to just also point out, and I'll leave some more technical items for John Gore to go over, but about a third of the site is given over to these pedestrian passeos, which are these really nice kind of interstitial spaces that will be vegetated and activated with activities and amenities for residents and also for neighbors, and also open for pedestrian flow between Woodland Street and Main Street. So I just ask, hope that you can vote in favor of the staff's recommendation and let John cover some more details.
Appreciate your time. Again, my name is John Gore. I live at 1212 Fathon Street. I'm a principal with Bar Civil Associates, and we appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about this project. Following up on Nick's comments about the building, as Donald said, the site's about 3.7 acres. It falls from, you know, 30 to 40 feet from Woodland Street down to Main Street. So it gave the team a big challenge to kind of come up with a site which doesn't really have any obvious kind of back-of-house space, to come up with a design and a building that addresses the frontage of both Woodland Street and Main Street, both very important streets in eastern Nashville, but both have very kind of different intensities and context. You know, one attribute that the site does have is these east-west alleys that parallel Woodland Street and then kind of turn and go down to Main Street. So what that allowed us to do is to access the building and the site off of these side alleys, which basically let us remove the vehicular curb cuts that we have on Woodland Street and on Main Street completely off so that 100% of the frontage on Woodland Street and Main Street is devoted to the public realm and to pedestrian circulation. This also allows us to fully park the garage underground instead of having kind of a precast garage. It has to be screened or surface parking. This allows us to completely tuck the structured parking under the garage and allows us to do a couple of things. First of all, from an access perspective, we keep our traffic off of Woodland Street, which is a less intense street. The access points go out to Woodland Street, and they also give people coming and going the ability to go out to Seventh or also to go out to Ninth. When you head out to Seventh, you've got access to a traffic signal which can go west on Main Street. The other thing that's unique about this garage is that it's proposed to be We've got a great mix of uses with commercial uses, office uses, and residential uses, which share parking very well. But what you see in a lot of developments is they end up kind of gating off the residential parking, so that there's not an ability to share parking. So that's an important aspect of this development. In addition to kind of managing vehicular access and parking, we are also making pedestrian safety improvements to Main Street. This is kind of a long block without a signal, and you see a lot of people crossing the street here. When I come home, I see everybody crossing the street with their yoga mats to go to hot yoga, and I'm concerned with all these people crossing the street. But when we started talking to NDOT about the pedestrian safety improvements that we could make, they pointed out that they actually already have a pedestrian safety project under design and asked that this project fund those improvements. So we've agreed for this project to fund the improvements that are already being designed by NDOT. This project also includes an enhancement to the existing we-go stop that's along Main Street. This is the number 56 BRT. It's one of the highest ridership buses in Metro Nashville, and when you jump on a bus at this site, you're downtown in less than five minutes. So it's a very real connection to downtown. When you think about the possibility of someone living here, they have very real connection to transit. They've got East Park behind them, they've got East Community Center, they've got a turn-up truck grocery, they've got more restaurants than you know what to do with. You're creating a situation where somebody has kind of a realistic ability to, at the very least, live here with very little car travel, or if somebody chooses to live here without a car, it's a real possibility. Speaking to some specifics quickly in the SP, as Nick said, we've kept our FAR at the same as the existing base zoning, the MUGA, so we are not asking for an increase in density. But one thing the SP does do that was important to Councilman Withers, it was important to all the neighbors, is it does exclude owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied short-term rentals, so they are not allowed in this SP. We appreciate planning staff's guidance as we've gone through this process, along with MDHA's guidance, and we've also got approvals from Metro Water Services, NDOT, and all the other departments that review this SP. So we're here to answer any questions you have, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you, and we'll reserve the 1 minute and 40 seconds for rebuttal. Is there anyone here speaking in support? If you want to come forward, and you'll each have two minutes and start with your name and address, and thank you for lining up to help keep the process moving.
Good evening, Commissioners. Dwayne Cuthbertson with Richmond Building Partners. We're at 21 Music Square West. We own the property immediately west of this site, 730 Main Street. We'll share an alley and connect to the public improvements made by the applicant as they develop. We're here, or I'm here, to express support for this project tonight. In fact, we're fairly excited about this project and what they've presented to you. To us, the plan presented tonight makes a pretty attractive statement for our city and really for the gateway of East Nashville that is Main Street. It injects a great amount of energy on a grossly underutilized property in our urban core. And as important, it injects that energy on an underutilized, high-capacity corridor that has good existing transit, and it has the potential for even better transit. It provides a lot of much-needed housing, a good concentration of commerce right where it's highly accessible, where infrastructure exists. It's where seemingly where Nashville Next seems to say it's appropriate. This development, not to say anything about the construction type and green roofs and such, seems to be supporting a more sustainable future many often talk about as desirable. So we think this project will significantly improve the built environment or significantly improve the human experience along Main Street and along woodland. It creates, or presents, human-scale, pedestrian-oriented, and engaging edges along both of those streets compared to what's existing is pretty hostile in our minds. Improves circulation for all users, including quasi-public space that Paseo that they've presented, which we think is a pretty great attribute. So the spatial distribution of buildings in height seems to break up the intensity. The topo seems to mitigate impact on woodland, especially with two-story buildings on woodland. We think it's a pretty great proposal. They could develop this much more intensely with the existing zoning, so we ask for your support.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is DJ Sullivan, 2220 Scott Avenue, District 7. I live about two and a half miles from the development. This is a very thoughtfully put-together project that deserves approval. Bottom line, we need more housing supply to stabilize housing prices in Nashville and East Nashville. Census data shows this area has not kept up with the general population growth that we've seen across Nashville, the Nashville area. There's absolutely no reason this highly desirable area of town should have a stagnant population. We're just not building enough housing for the people who want to live here. As far as the qualities of the development, I like the connectivity between woodland and Main. The development will provide a safe path for people to walk to a high-frequency bus line. There's no displacement of residents. We do have some displacement of businesses that I want to acknowledge. I believe the loss of affordable business spaces in general is largely self-inflicted by overly restrictive zoning in the rest of East Nashville, and that's not really something we can blame on this development or the developer. This project will greatly increase the tax base to help pay for other things we need like schools and sidewalks. It's a very attractive development, using quality building materials, engaging high-end design services. This shows they believe East Nashville is a worthwhile place to invest. And lastly, approving the SP protects us from the development being short-term rentals, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I am Tim Boils. I live at 307B South 10th Street, about a half mile from this development. My wife is a family interpartitioner that works at East Nashville Family Medicine that is in the current development. We also go to church at City Church that meets in the current development. My wife's clinic and our church will be displaced, along with at least 10 families that we know that live in Edgefield, and we could not be more happy and ecstatic about this development. I want to see 20 more of these. We live where we live so that we can walk to places like this. The fact that this is a mixed-use development that provides housing is a phenomenal thing. I'm a realtor. I mostly sell single-family homes, and am very distressed to see the housing crisis not allow people in. The fact that this is in the UZO and is even a discussion about whether we should build housing is sad to me, but I really hope that this is approved and that it's the first step in 20 more of these filling up our primary corridors on woodland and on Main. Thanks.
Thank you.
James Guthrie, 312 South 11th Street. So I've been here before to speak in support of housing policy and housing development in Nashville, usually in broad terms about economic and environmental benefits, equity issues, general quality of life, especially for the people who will get to live in the housing that we are proposing to build. So I almost feel selfish speaking on something that benefits me so directly. I live about 600 yards from this site, right behind him, actually. I pass by it several times a week, and I really strongly hope that you approve this project because of the many benefits it offers to families like mine and all of my neighbors. These are benefits that base zoning does nothing to guarantee or even encourage. Their benefits were far too likely to lose if this SP gets disapproved or withdrawn. In blackjack terms, I feel like my neighborhood has been dealt a 20. I know there are people here to speak against this, and I guess compared to their optimism that we will potentially get something better than this if we reject this proposal and get a new one, I think that makes me the cynic in the room, actually. The first benefit is housing. With this proposal, we'll get 375 new homes in East Nashville that we know will be filled with residents because the SP restricts short-term rentals. These new residents will help us preserve the historic residential character of the neighborhood. If this SP goes away, we risk a fully short-term rental development that would further tip this area toward more of a tourist district than the walkable neighborhood full of long-term residents that it has historically been. We're also getting more green space, including a public path to connect Eighth Street from East Park right here, across Main Street through Douglas Park, straight to the pedestrian bridge that goes over Ellington, which connects us to McFerrin Park, and eventually across the East Bank to a new pedestrian bridge to Germantown. So just for the sake of preserving East Nashville character we all love, please let us take this deal, ask you to approve this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in support? If not, is there anyone speaking in opposition? If you guys would like to come forward and...
... somewhere in between?
You can go on both sides. You'll have two minutes and start with your name and address.
My name is Carol Norton. I live at 801 Boscoble Street, three blocks from the proposed development. We shouldn't be here today. Why? Because on May 29th, notice was given by Councilman Withers of a public meeting he had arranged without anyone's knowledge for May 31st at East Park Community Center regarding this meeting today. Two days' notice for a meeting that ended up standing room only with neighbors not only from Edgefield, but Shelby Hills, Lachlan, and business owners of the current 800 Woodland Street address. The meeting was to notify us of today's meeting that will change the street's gate of both woodland and Main Street, the gateways to East Nashville. Seven days to digest plans for this monumental project on our periphery, historic Edgefield adjacent, if you will. Mr. Withers will tell you this property is not historic, as he did me online, and therefore doesn't warrant special consideration. He's right about its historic status. No historic building survived the slaughter of urban renewal beginning in 1959 and continuing for five years throughout the early 60s. A sign about the size of that screen up there was erected at Fourth and Shelby proclaiming the largest redevelopment and urban renewal project in the country. But I beg to differ about the importance of consideration of what is to be built at 800 Main and Woodland. If woodland and Main could have been included in historic Edgefield, Nashville's first local historic preservation district that would require review for appropriate construction, rest assured it would have been. We're also Nashville's first neighborhood national register district. We care about what happens there. We're vehement that the proposal before you is inappropriate and warrants more consideration. I would like to ask that Councilman Withers recuse himself since he made decisions regarding this that we were not included in. It appears to me to be a conflict of interest.
Thank you. Yes.
My name is Pete Green. I live at 930 Fatherland Street. I'm representing the historic Edgefield neighborhood. I did advise the Planning Commission in advance that we would be speaking. So first of all, bless you, all of you, for being here. I would not want to be staying up this late to look at these things. I had a very carefully timed five-minute presentation, which I'm now going to put down, because I actually want to take a slightly different tack here. So just let me make one opening statement, which is that density and height are not the same thing. That is just a fact. You can have something that is 10 floors high that is less dense than something that is two floors high. That's just reality. Timeline here becomes important. I was fascinated by the discussion about the McAlpine proposal. That was actually some very fascinating discussions today. But the McAlpine proposal that was early on, and the thing that struck me was just the discussion about how the community was involved in the planning and how the developers consulted with the community about what they were doing. That did not happen here. This project was announced on the 6th of April. That same day, I actually personally reached out to Segala on LinkedIn, and to his credit, he gave me his cell phone number. We talked that day. He said he wanted to be involved in talking to the community. We asked Brett if he could be involved in getting that set up. Timeline's a little bit different from what I've seen, but around the 22nd of May, Brett announced on one of his updates that he was having a meeting on the 29th. So I do want to clarify that. The update on the Edgefield Facebook page was 29th of May. Meeting was on the 31st, standing room only. There were about 40 people in the room. None of them walked out of there, apart from the developers and Brett. Nobody walked out of there fully supporting this project. So having said that, let me say, what I'm going to say now is a little bit schizophrenic because there's a lot of stuff that we actually like about this project. We like the fact that Councilman Withers asked for the height to be reduced to two floors on woodland. We like the access from Main. We can argue about whether there are enough parking spaces here, but the reality is that the parking that is proposed is more than they needed to propose for base. I want to be very clear about this because we have, as a neighborhood, been accused of nimbyism before. This is not about nimbyism. We have no objection to the number of units at all. The number of units is completely appropriate for this lot. But I would like to quote something that legal counsel said earlier here, which is that when you apply for an SP, you are by definition applying for something you don't have a legal right to ask for. And I would expect that in applying for an SP, that you would give a reason why you would want that done. The only reason that we have been given, and I do recognize there are some benefits to the SP, but the only reason that we've been given is that they have a very good architect, which they undoubtedly do, who has designed a 10-floor building, which has got a very nice design, and they would like to do it. And that is not a reason. Density and height are not the same thing. Simple arithmetic tells us you could take three floors off the 10-floor block, and you could put three floors on the four-foot block, and you'd have a seven-foot block, a six-foot block, and a seven-foot block within the zoning, not violating any zoning. The white space between buildings would still be there. You would still have the two floors on woodland. You would have the same number of units. You would have the same density, and you can do it without 10 floors. And so there is no logical or justifiable reason to ask for the 10 floors other than they want to do it. And the fact that a developer or a council member or anybody else wants to do it, but there is actually no reason to do it, is not justified. Concerns about traffic, the primary concern about traffic is not about overflow. The primary concern about traffic is just about Main Street. Main Street has four lanes, has no turning lane. There's going to be a lot of traffic turning left into this building, particularly at Rushar. Traffic, the road, is very, very dense. At the moment, you turn left onto Ninth at Rushar, you can sit there for 30 seconds. Essentially, you are reducing the traffic to one lane. That is, we perceive that as being an issue. We have asked for and not been given any details of how many of the parking spaces are for residents, how many are for commercial, et cetera. And really, in the end, what we're really asking for here is, our preference is that this is deferred. We would like to work with the developers and work with Councilman Withers on modifying this design and bring it back for something that the community, because this is going to be the single largest development ever bordering on Edgefield, feels that they can buy into. If we do not defer it, we would like to ask that the SP be denied because there is no reason for it. They can build the same number of, the same density, the same number of units without the SP. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm freezing. I don't know how you all do this. I'm Emily Richard. I live about a block away at 820 Russell Street, so I'm at the ninth, what I call the ninth street gate to Edgefield. As Sarah Palin-style, I can see, we work from my porch. I sit and I see this residential, this commercial development going up. I chose to live here three years ago to be one block and two blocks away from engaging places to work and shop and dine and play and meet with my neighbors. Really looked forward to the build out of woodland and Main. I'm here to kind of step back and ask you a really philosophical question. Unfortunately, my email didn't get in your basket yesterday. Why do we have to quote an earlier developer? Why do we have such, or one of the four people? Why do we have such underutilized Main Street and woodland Street? I believe, because I'm afraid of running out of time, if we always grant exceptions, all we get built are exceptions. All that comes to you are exceptions. If you drive up and down Main Street, like I do, and I walk usually, and woodland, there's really virtually nothing else being built but these SPs. It's just another SP, 43% taller than what's allowed. I don't see why this can't be done within the rules. I feel, as a former real estate valuation professional, that the developers who would build conforming projects that would support neighborhood residential, the residents of the... I feel, as a former real estate valuation professional, that the developers who would build conforming projects that would support neighborhood residential, the residents of the neighborhood, and conform, I think they're afraid of what might get built next to them because we just do SP after SP. I've been here only three years. I've been up in front of you. This is my third time. I just can't believe the things that happen here. It feels like there's no zoning at all. I'm asking you to respect the zoning. Hold them to seven stories. There's so much cool stuff about this project, but there's just no reason for it to be 10, and that's just an enormous change in our skyline and our neighborhood. Thank you. I can't believe I did that in two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to probably repeat what everybody else said. Thank you for all you being here and everybody that came before you the past few decades to not be run over by the popularity boom in Nashville because you've kept this community still a very nice family community in Historic Edgefield. And we like having access to all the, you know, you think I'm old now. I'm really 22 still, and I like to do things. I live on 306 South 8th Street, walking distance to this thing. My doctor's there. There's Pilates. There's a great bakery. There's community acupuncture on a sliding scale. There's a chiropractor. You know, it's a community place, but that they're tearing down. I'm not trying to talk you out of that. Beautiful thing they're proposing. Secretary Kemp said it best. We just want it deferred because, as with that other property, I feel this is an incomplete application. I went a few days ago to the community center, Brett did a great job. The owners, the committee did a good job. We want this to, we just, we want to understand and make sure. I mean, you're best to make decisions when you have as much of the information as you can to make a rational thing. This is going to last forever. You put up a 10-story building, that's a precedent. There's no going back. Just like breaking bad habits is easier to learn them than to get rid of them. So we just want to know. 385 units, 319 parking spots, okay. Questions unanswered. We've only had a few days to do this. Are there designated parking places about for the residents? These people are going to rent these apartments. Yeah, it's a nice dream to say, oh, we're promoting walking to work and riding. I'm going to see somebody driving to downtown Nashville in a snowstorm. It's one thing to be in New York City with, you know, old skyscrapers, you know, keeping you safe from the wind and the rain. But we don't have that here in Nashville. It's a nice idea. I hope it happens. But when those people come home at night and all the people from the bar and the restaurant that they want in park in the parking places, that they don't even have enough parking for residents. You can't change the parking. It's a safety issue. Okay?
And we need your name. We got your address.
Sorry. Bonnie Boss.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening to all of us. We really want progress, but we want to...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I just decided to add something. My name is Sony Aldridge. I live at 821 Fosible Street. I've lived in this neighborhood for almost 35 years. I concur with everything my neighbor said. One of the things that I heard the other day, and we talked about it tonight, was this is a very odd geographical landscape where they're proposing this. They're talking about building this underground parking, which is going to involve blasting. And this was brought up the other day when we were talking about this. I've heard nothing about their plan for this blasting and how they're going to protect the historical structures that are on either side of this property. And before you approved that, I would like to know more about that aspect of this because you blow something up, you can't fix it. And I just wanted to say that with my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition? If not, then the applicant can have two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. I appreciate all the neighbors' comments tonight. Just wanted to address a couple of them. One, we heard a comment about a turn lane. We appreciate that. This is a pretty constricted area of Main Street, so that kind of gets back to the 14 and a half foot right-of-way dedication that Endot has asked for. So we're pulling the curb back to kind of help make way for those improvements in the future. We do appreciate the comments about blasting. Blasting is regulated by the state of Tennessee and it's administered by the local fire marshal. We have a kind of four-story multifamily building about 30 feet away from us, so and blasting is going to be very delicate, but that's something. There's a very specific procedure for the contractor to, you know, take inventory of all the properties around, notify property owners and that sort of thing. We're certainly happy to talk about any of this anymore. I think we reached out to Councilman Withers and suggested that if he would like to have another meeting for this project, it's the council, in case there's any conditions that he wants to add to this bill, that we're absolutely happy to meet again. And just real quickly on the forum, I think there's a lot of good points. I mean, you know, this SP is almost the exact same as the base zoning, except for the request to vary the height. And I think a lot of that speaks to kind of the height. You know, MUGA allows for seven stories. And we've all kind of seen, you know, what you see a lot in Nashville. You imagine a block like this, a perfect square, seven stories. The first thing you do is you build a big precast concrete parking garage in the middle, and then you kind of wrap the whole thing, like a big, big kind of party board donut around it, and you just kind of end up with this big block. And I think when the design team and Councilman Withers and neighbors really first started to think about this, I think kind of the spaces moving in between the buildings was the most important aspect. So to try to answer the questions about why we're asking to vary the height, that just has to do with the forum and creating, you know, the public spaces that are in between the towers that vary from four to seven to 10. So I hope that answers your questions, but we'll certainly be glad to answer any other questions that you have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So we'll close the public hearing. And Councilman Withers, do you want to start us off?
Thank you, Vice Chair, and I want to thank everyone who came out today. This property does have MUGA zoning that was put in maybe 2012 or '13, so that's been there for a long time, certainly before I was elected. It is also located within a redevelopment district that is expiring in a couple of years. But given that the design review that presently exists on this site, which everyone has agreed is very critical, it pretty much is up to MDHA. So the design redevelopment districts have design guidelines, but the designer review committee actually says whether or not they're going to approve your concept plan or not. They really get a first stab at it. They completely approve some things on Main Street that I have been like, how did this meet your criteria? But the MDHA designer review committee, I have respect for the people that serve on it. It's not a public hearing process. And so that is why it was important to me to have an SP here. I mean, frankly, and I think MDHA agreed with that. I called over to Joe Kane, and I said, hey, you know, there's this proposal. I want you all to take a look at it. Let me know if you have an initial feedback. They're going to go before the DRC and, you know, look forward to what that feedback is. But really, you know, again, in the world of construction today, we see lots of projects that could wait two years. And so that's the thing for me is that leaving this exclusively up to MDHA would sort of leave two risks. One is that the MDHA designer review committee is not a public meeting or a public hearing. So that's number one. And number two, in a little over two years, it goes away entirely, and then there's no design guidance on this site. The only design guidance that is on this site at that time is what's called the Main Street UDO. And what that UDO says is, you have these A districts all along Main Street that require that it be built to the sidewalk and that have glazing and things like that. Well, that UDO actually does a weird thing. It says all of those urban design criteria that are even in the base zoning, they're optional. So when folks want to know why Brett Withers won an SP, this is exactly why. This provides a public hearing. It provides review by this body in a public setting. It requires final approval by Metro Council over more than just the height. I mean, I'm going to be honest with you. I wouldn't say that it's 100% certain that MDHA's designer review committee wouldn't say, you know what? This is a redevelopment district. The purpose of a redevelopment district, the first word is redevelopment. We've been lacking in redevelopment on Main Street, and we think that this serves the purpose of redevelopment. It's not beyond the pale to me that they could approve that anyway. So that's why I requested an SP. I will also point out that for this project, this parcel, I've heard lots of proposals for this one over the years, in my eight years. And lots of things come and go and never really come to fruition. So with this one, I met with the team early on. I'm like, wow, that's interesting. You know, let me know if you really, really think this has legs. And so months, I mean, maybe close to a year went by. And I had a neighbor who said, she's like, hey, my building's being sold and my business is going to move. And I'm like, that's terrible. What's going on? She's like, how could you not know that this project's here? I'm like, because I've heard so many that, like, who knows if they're ever going to stick? But again, that's why I thought this SP was so important. Because this is a prominent parcel along Main Street. This one received press coverage that included drawings, which I had already had some feedback in, but I'm going to get to that in a minute. It was covered by the Nashville Business Journal on April 4th. It was covered by another publication that I'm less familiar with, but on April the 5th. It was covered in the Nashville Post, including detailed comments about my thoughts on it. On April the 6th, so those were publicly available. Those were shared in social media circles in East Nashville and had the comments that often ensue about development matters in East Nashville. So this community largely, if they were paying attention to Facebook or whatnot, knew that they are reading the paper. It's been out there. But I will say, the initial proposal for this, well, let me get to a couple other things. So for the redevelopment district, so and I know we've had, I think, a record number of handouts today, but I have this one for you. So if you will go to that. So the redevelopment districts had been, E, F, Oins as well as East Bank, had been put together, that work kind of started with the committee in the 80s. They had put together two of them later in the 90s. Of course, we had a tornado in '98, which some of our neighbors remember. Then there was a very public process that was called a RUDAT, which some of our neighbors here today participated in. And as a result of that, the design guidelines that were put together for the two redevelopment districts were codified a little bit more. And while there were general guidelines, which again, MDHA has sole discretion to apply or not, if you go to, if you flip over to your second page, public input results. So if you go to the right, for Main Street, I've circled, buildings as high as 10 stories were considered appropriate for portions of Main Street. And that was a very community-led program, and that was 20 years ago. And so when the team came to me with the 10 stories on Main, I'm like, you know, I know that we're growing and, you know, we're going to probably see more intensity now than we had thought. I'm like, you know, I think that I can maybe support that there because there is a basis for broad community participation that would have suggested that maybe you could do 10. I said, but you're going to reduce the height on Woodland because across the street on Woodland is a historic district. We have a lot of single-family homes across the street. I've known many of these neighbors for years, love them to death, right? They're not crazy about the 10 stories. But if they were looking out in your little historic bungalow or Cape Cod, they could be looking out across the street at a four- or five-story apartment building that was under the original proposal. Brick, very different from the neighborhood. I said, you're going to lower it. And they lowered it all the way down to two stories. So my neighbors that love to sit on their porch and look at the sunset, well, they can still see the sunset with this plan. And that was important to me. And I know neighbors are thinking that Brett Withers made a lot of decisions in the community, but this is all based on documents that our community worked on before I was here. So it's not mine personally, but I moved here because of a lot of this work. As well as real consideration from my neighbors across the street. Will that block their view of some things? Well, yeah, for some people who have on Woodland, who have that view, it will block their view of the Weiss Liquor Store sign, which is the East Nashville version of the Statue of Liberty. So I get that. But as opposed to looking across the street at our four- or five-story apartment building, lowered that all the way to two stories. So a lot of my neighbors like to get together and hang out on porches and have cocktails. Well, you know, maybe you can get together with your neighbors, your new neighbors across the street and get together and enjoy cocktails at their patio, too. I think that's great. I also think, another part of why I think that's great is that the existing base zoning allows short-term rentals. The redevelopment districts were created long before anyone thought that short-term rentals were a thing. We had historic bed and breakfast, but that was it, and that was also zoning matter. So the only way, again, going back to why an SP, the only way to restrict short-term rentals is to do an SP in this case. So that's another reason for an SP. So having said that, this stuff was out in the public, in media, in social media beginning in early April. I've worked quite a bit with Donald Anthony, who's been great to work with me on that. Worked with him, worked with our design studio staff to say, hey, just can you give me some perspectives on it? I try to be very collaborative. I've never gone to staff and said, like, it's got to be this way because I've given some background. But I really want to hear what they have to say. And so that got me to a general level of comfort that the applicants could at least file the SP, which they did. And of course, when you file something, it shows up on Development Tracker and you have notice mailings as well. So there's that. And again, I did work to put together a community meeting, but I wanted to be sure that everyone was able to get as much information at one time as they could. Because frankly, most of these design reviews are not. Unlike some parcels where there isn't really a design guidance, there's a lot of design guidance there that is handled by, that could be handled by other parties. So in particular, with all of the mobility things along Main Street in particular, Councilmember Parker and I have been working on that for a long time. Main Street is the shared boundary between Districts 5 and 6. My council colleagues and I, we could have radically different viewpoints on lots of things, but if there's a project that's on the shared boundary, we work together. And so I did want to respect his schedule. I asked the team, I said, go meet with Councilmember Parker and see what his thoughts are. And that, his feedback wasn't incorporated. We knew what those concerns were. I worked with Mr. Anthony to say, like, hey, can you just keep me updated about what the departmental conditions, what are the departments thinking of the conditions that might be applied? And so, yeah, the reason why this meeting was a little bit late is because I wanted to make sure that we had as much information for people as possible for a project that had a lot of coverage already. That meeting, as Mr. Green mentioned, I did announce on May the 22nd. It was because Councilmember Parker was invited to attend, we have to publicly notice those. So I publicly noticed that through the council office. I did send a reminder on the 29th, and we had the meeting on the 31st. And so we did have good attendance. I mean, a lot of times if someone were having a meeting and no one was there, that would be an indication that people didn't know about the meeting. But if you have a meeting on, even if I'll say seven days or 10 days' notice, and if the room is packed, then people care and they knew about the meeting. So that's a good thing. We had good discussion there. What I'll also point to is we do have a lot of correspondence that's come in so far that is, I think, from many communities, community members, is very much in support. I think it's, one thing that I think is interesting as well is that even for those letters that are in the kind of opposition category, they're like, we like the two stories. We like that there's no vehicular entrance. We like that there's no short-term rentals. We like that you're restricting commercial to ground floors. Part of the reason why that's important is we have a lot of commercial, business, commercially zone spaces along Main Street where everyone, especially post-COVID, but everyone wants to do rooftop decks and bars. And that leads to a significant amount of tension with the residential neighbors who live nearby. I mean, that is a real thing, and I want to acknowledge that concern. And it was raised at the meeting, and it's something that I'm considering. My take on this one is that there's a couple reasons why that's different here. Again, because of an SP. One, commercials limited to ground floors. So there will not be a business that needs to sell fancy cocktails on the rooftop deck. Now, if a resident wants to have one on their balcony or something, that's up to them. But the SP itself precludes that. Number two, a lot of the businesses that are generating a lot of the noise, they're a standalone business where their business is not also reliant upon residential. So if you are involved in this development, the first people that are going to hear that noise are the residents in the residential units above who are going to be calling downstairs. They're going to be the first people who do that. And so I believe that there are a lot of built-in protections already with this design as required in the SP that address that concern. I have noted to neighbors that I'm willing to continue talking about that, but I think that that is something that we can work through the council process because this will not go to council until August. Additionally, in your pocket, I've heard a neighbor whom I love dearly say to me that, you know, that her questions have not been answered. So just wanted to share. So I received an email on Friday. And this is my level of detail in my response to that very valued neighbor's questions. And did I answer every single aspect? No, but when people have emailed me legitimate questions, I take them seriously, and I will continue to take them seriously, and I will respond as quickly as I can. We are on a budget, but that will be over soon. But so what I would say again to colleagues is that the ability to create public space on Main Street was very, very important to Councilmember Parker. It was important to me, but it was very important to Councilmember Parker. And what you find is that when you start reducing building height, either all the buildings become very uniform, which really does make the project loom larger over the neighborhood. It makes it appear bigger, even though it's a lower height if you have 500 feet of frontage that is all the same height. But what, allowing, I think Mr. Dryden did a great job of explaining, allowing one building to be high but having a variety of heights allows us to have this public space that we would not get otherwise. And again, you would not get that through base zoning. You may or may not get that through MDHA, but I think it's worth putting it in an SP. And so I think that's it for now, but if folks have other questions, I'd love to answer those, too.
Thank you. Thank you. Other folks want to share their thoughts on this project? Mr. Henley?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. So my, I mean, I think in seeing it and understanding the level of detail that was brought by Councilmember Withers, you know, when I first saw it and understanding the zoning that's already in the zoning that's already in place, and honestly, the policy that's in place, it, it says, buildings very close together. And that stood out to me because the buildings aren't very close together, but I understand why. I think it's, it's a large site, it allows for us to create a pedestrian-friendly area. It allows us to have a Main Street that honestly might act like a Main Street of old, which I think is something that, you know, does tie more into the historic context. I would not have expected this property to be one that would have two-story heights on Woodland based on the MUG zoning. And so again, you know, as somebody who does see the value in SPs, I think that's something that came out of it, that really does respect that facade and that facing of, of Woodland Street. I, I get the angst with the ten-story structure, I, I understand it, I think it's something we get, that comes up before this body over and over again. But I also think, you know, when I think of Main Street, I do think, you know, ten-story buildings are going to come there, and I think, like you said, you leave it to other, other bodies, I think that would have been something that would have been approved there. So I think here, the context of what's being proposed makes a lot of, I think, again, it's another good opportunity to have things that have been planned for, I don't know how long, as far as our public transit infrastructure to be improved upon and to be approved upon quickly. I think it does make a more appealing location for, for residential living, when you know that that's something that's woven into the fabric of a city's larger plan. I think so often we have folks come and speak about not having continuity of planning. And fortunately, today, we've had a few things that have come to us that have conditions, but also are part of larger strategies to improve the public infrastructure in these communities. I'm, I'm, I'm liking that. I know it's been an interesting day at Planning Commission, and we always have those, but one of the, the silver linies that I take from it is that we're starting to have these opportunities where there's cohesion between our city departments and their planning, and the development's starting to meet them and, and absorb some of the things that they probably wouldn't be able to get done in another way. I, I do also think that, so Councilmember Withers brought it to my attention, the restricting of commercial businesses to the first floor, because when I saw two floors on Woodland Street, I thought, oh, okay, but then you're gonna have the rooftop that kind of spills over and looks across. And so that was new information to me, but I do, I do think, again, it's a, you know, the SP allows for a level of stewardship that might not have come in another way. Outside of that, I think the design itself is, is, again, it's very, it, it seems to be very centered around the pedestrian experience, and it seems like something that can be woven into a historic community that brings it into a Main Street context. I mean, it is a very interesting dynamic, that segment between Main Street and Woodland Street. And so I know it's being bombarded by development that is very much, you know, drop in here, drop in there. I think this is one that at least seems to bring some cohesion to that. And it, whether or not, I think the, the community at large will, will ultimately find a consensus on this. I do think it, it shows that there's a way to weave in that historic, kind of two-story, very much pedestrian scale to migrating towards Main Street, which I think, over time, we will see it begin to be, as it is zoned to be, of a, of a higher scale and higher density.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. I'd like to start thanking by our staff and Metro ITS, because Development Tracker, they post really good application. So by checking that, I was able to learn thirty-two pages of detail. And I really appreciate the thought going into this project, because this project taking very unique topography between Main Street and Woodland. And I do understand the neighbor's point of view, because, you know, seven-story, why not seven-story? And, but I'm glad to hear, you know, they're agreeing with the density. So somewhat density and, you know, height is not the same thing. So, because I think height, seven-story and ten-story, it's somewhat subjective. Because sometimes, you know, seven-story building can be as high as ten-story, because, you know, in our code, we don't specify in the floor height. So it says, yes, application only said seven stories, but when, when, you know, you go into take a look at it, it can be as tall as ten stories. Like, we did, you know, approve some development, and, you know, some fourteen-story buildings, but reality is much shorter than office building next door, ten-story. So that's the reality, so I do understand, you know, neighbor's point, you why not seven-story? But the reason I really appreciate this design element is, like applicant stated, breakup factor. Because the buildings are breaking up one way, one A, one B, too, and also different height. Because going towards, you know, Woodland, and behind that is a historic zoning neighborhood, still has one-story, one-and-a-half-story, two-stories, really unique neighborhood. And I think this design element, breaking up height difference, pushback height in the middle, is really considerate to good transition to, you know, historical zoning neighborhood. So I do appreciate that, you know, element, and also the use of building material. And, you know, this is really unique. It can be, with the base zoning, it can be seven-story concrete block, and which, you know, we are so tired of seeing it. So I think if we were to approve SP in this specific location, I think development team and our staff did a really great job. And it's really considerate, because automobile traffic is concentrated towards Main Street. But activate entire area for the pedestrian and foot traffic, it's very unique, and I think it will blend into existing building. So for that, I really appreciate and support staff recommendation.
Any further comments? I guess I'll say, having been a resident of East Nashville for twenty years now, I realize, at first on Russell Street, so half of, you know, a couple of blocks from this, and then later up in Lachlan Springs, but, you know, I've certainly watched Woodland Street transform over twenty years, and certainly watched Main Street as it's starting to transform. And, you know, this has always been a very underutilized site, and it's, it's always sort of been, you know, for a long time, was sort of a source of light, like, the development stopped there, because, you know, nothing else could, could go past this huge open cavernous parking lot. You know, once the turn-up truck opened up, and we started getting a little more activity, and, you know, it just really seems like this is ripe for that, you know, to see this site reused. And I think it has been done in a contextually sensitive way, as Commissioner Henley pointed out, to really connect from Woodland to Main Street, which have two very different feels. You know, one thing I do, I do, as we're talking about transit and the improvements, trying to imagine crossing Main Street to get to a bus stop scares me. So I do hope that we are talking more about pedestrian improvements to try to help facilitate people crossing Main Street. And one other thing I just wanted to kind of put on the record, because it does concern me, you know, that the people that have brought life back to this site are the small businesses, the family clinic, you know, the, the East Nashville Clinic, yeast, balloon store, you know, those people have, have brought life to that neighborhood. And I would strongly, you know, I don't know what, what can be done at the council level, but would like to really strongly encourage some consideration for seeing if there is a way to allow, allow some of those tenants back, or to, to try to address the displacement. Because finding that kind of affordable space for those small businesses anywhere in this area is gonna be very, very difficult. So, those are my two cents. I guess if there's no further comments, I will see if there is a recommendation, motion. Anyone interested in making a motion? Any further comments?
I thought the motion was gonna come from the Vice Chair this time. Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve staff recommendation, to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
Second. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to note my recusal from the item.
Oh, sorry about that. Commissioner Blackshear has recused, has been recused. Okay. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
My personal counsel rating. And you're all very nice people, and Brett Withers, but...
Hey, 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 this is not, that's out of order, it's out of order for this, thank you. No. No, no, it's out of order, ma'am. And, excuse me, we have, we have to finish our meeting this evening, okay? Sir? Yeah, we need to, we need to complete our meeting, we can discuss later. Our final item, item forty-three, and I, we still have people here that are speaking in opposition to forty-three. Okay. Thank you for waiting, and we'll get started.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioner Selena Conning, sign with the Planning Department, presenting item number forty-three this evening. The request is to rezone from zoning District R-ten to RM-nine NS for properties located at 407 and 409 Donaldson Pike. Staff's recommendation is to approve. The site consists of two parcels located at 407 and 409 Donaldson Pike, approximately a hundred and twenty feet north of Lakeland Drive, and is a total of 1.13 acres. There are single-family homes on each lot, surrounding properties are zoned CL, OL, and R-ten, and surrounding uses are primarily residential and commercial. This site is located within a T-three suburban residential corridor, and that's intended to maintain, enhance, and create suburban residential corridors. These are located along prominent arterial boulevards or collector avenues that are served by multiple modes of transportation and designed and operated to enable safe, attractive, and comfortable access for travel, and travel for all users. T-three, and, T-three RC areas provide high access management and are served by moderately connected street networks, sidewalks, and existing or planned mass transit. The T-three RC policy is applicable to areas along prominent suburban arterial boulevard and collector avenue corridors, whereas, where areas are zoned residential and the primary land use is residential. Since this site is located within a T-three RC policy, and the MCSP identifies Donaldson Pike as a mixed-use arterial boulevard with long-term need, the proposed modest increase density at this site is supported, given the infrastructure is able to support a greater amount of vehicular traffic. The proposed rezone aligns with the goals of the T-three RC policy, as it is providing the opportunity for an evolving residential development pattern regarding size, scale, and density. And for these reasons, staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. I guess the applicant is, is in the room still? As you know, you have ten minutes.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Roy Dale of Dale &amp; Associates, I met with some other neighbors here earlier today, I guess I missed these in the back, so I thought we had already resolved most of this. So this is a property in Councilmember Syracuse's district. This zone change request is actually for the property owner, I do more and more of that now, representing current property owners that are wanting to entitle their own properties versus someone coming in and entitling it and not being able to get them the full benefit of the value of their property. So this individual came to me, and actually, he owns one piece, and I think his sister-in-law owns the other piece. They came to me, they actually went to the Planning Commission staff first to, to look at the potential zoning that, that could be requested. And so I believe he started out with an RM-fifteen zoning. He actually met with the community, walked the community, talked to the council member, had a meeting in his office as well. And as a result of the, the, the meetings that he had, he decided to reduce this to an RM-nine zoning. And so he has the council member's support, it meets the policy, and we simply ask the commission to endorse that policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone here speaking in support? Is anyone speaking in opposition? You're welcome to come forward. And you, you'll have two minutes, and please start with your name and address.
Charles Dean, 415 Donaldson Pike. My wife and myself own 413, 415, 417 Donaldson Pike. This was originally part of my granddad's farm, he sold it in fifty-four, and all these houses were built in fifty-five. It's been a very nice neighborhood, then, now, and always has been. People could come out, they had plenty of room in these yards to have cookouts in good weather, play with their kids, walk through dogs as they're so inclined. But now you're talking about putting all these units on 1.3 or 1.6 acres, whatever it is. And there hasn't been any notification to any of us about exact, exactly what is gonna be here. We've sort of been in the dark about this. And we've heard nine units, well, if you're gonna have nine units, you're probably talking about at least eighteen cars. And there is no on-street parking on Donaldson Pike. I don't know where you're gonna put nine units and have parking and any room to even breathe in this area. Strongly suggest this approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lee Brendel, I live at 2819 Lakeland Drive, actually where my granddad purchased a home in fifty-seven, purchased it from him two years ago before he passed, at ninety-eight years old, James Cato. They're very close friends with the Dean family, Betty and Charles Dean are very well-known in the community, in helping, you know, teach women how to cook and clean and do all the things with his mother, Carleen Dean. I say that to say that we have a very predominant family in Nashville that cares about their community. They own several properties in Nashville and are trying to keep the, the right people in Nashville. These are elders, these are older people. I, I know that you mentioned in a prior case that things were sent out through Facebook, through media, but we have a lot of elders in this neighborhood. We have people that are not connected from a marketing standpoint, that have no idea what's happening, and how they are gonna be affected monetarily, financially, taxes. We want to know what is going on. Not really sure who went out into the community to shake hands and chat, but I sure didn't get a call. None of my neighbors got a call. We want to have answers, and knowledge is the best way to make a decision. So we can't make a decision if we don't know what's gonna happen. So, anyway, thank you.
Do you wanna come forward? You're welcome.
I'm morally supporting.
Okay.
I mean, I live in the neighborhood, too, but I don't wanna publicly... I will say that we do have a lot of elders that could not be here.
Okay.
I'm not really sure what we need to do to help their voice be heard.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't think we have any further people, so would you like your two minutes for rebuttal?
So, you know, Donaldson Pike, it's, it's a very busy roadway that accesses towards the airport, and you can see that these properties are really somewhat disconnected to the homes that are around them. There's a lot of rental property here. So I think this, you know, based upon the policy, it's, it's a good area for an infill development. The requirements of the Metro zoning ordinance, as far as screening and buffering, would go into effect, that would help transition or help provide the proper buffering between the adjacent properties. And so I, I think this is something that really meets policy, it meets a need of housing, a variety of housing, as a matter of fact, and, and the proper location. So I know the council member is sensitive to the community, and I'm sure he'll have a meeting with them prior to this going to public hearing, but I would simply ask for the commission to recommend approval based upon policy and based upon the staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clifton, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with you again.
Well, it's, it is a lot of things, and I've kind of highlighted, there's lots of gaps in terms of how we get our information and how sophisticated people are, more than, mostly much more than I am, but I try to catch up sometimes. But it, it, I understand the, the nervousness people have about changes like this. I think what I'm understanding about this, this last case here is that it's, it is what's contemplated, it is not. It is not a major change. It is something that, from a planning standpoint, which is what we're looking at, is not evil, it's not, it's not wrong. It's not mandated that it be done, but it becomes a policy decision for the legislative body, for the Metro Council. I think from a planning standpoint, this certainly makes sense, as it's been explained to us.
Other comments? Yes, Commissioner Blackshear.
One of the, I guess, one of the main comments that the opponents brought up was just notice and how developments like this get noticed to the neighbors. And I know there are rules around it, but obviously, there can be community meetings held by the developer, but Metro planning also has rules around it. If you could just speak to that, that'd be helpful.
Certainly. So when applications to, when applications are received by the Planning Commission for a rezoning, the first thing that happens is that a postcard notice is mailed out to all properties within 1,000 feet of the, of the property line. So all properties within 1,000 feet receive a postcard notice indicating that we have received an application. It tells what the application is for, they're yellow postcards, and then it indicates that you can find additional information on either Development Tracker or by calling the Planning Front Counter, where we have two planners that staff that front counter, and they're able to answer questions if people call about what the request is for. Subsequently, prior to being on the Planning Commission agenda, a mailed notice is sent to the same group of 1,000, of property owners within 1,000 feet. And that notice provides information as to the date and time of the Planning Commission meeting. It provides additional information as to what the request is. In this case, the request would go to RM-nine. And then it indicates that you can email comments to the Planning Commission and provides the email address, or gives a phone number, again, that you can also call for additional information. Should the item move beyond the Planning Commission and go to council, there is a, oh, and signage is posted on the property indicating the location and the date of the hearing here. Should this item move forward to the council level, another public hearing is held at council level. Noticing is again sent to the same thousand feet from the property line, and signs are once again posted as well for the council public hearings.
Thank you, that's helpful. I mean, a lot of us don't participate in social media, and obviously, older people may not be on Facebook, but there are mailings that come out and phone numbers to call. If you're not within that 1,000-foot area, you won't get it. But if you're within a close enough zone to the property, you will get mailed notices. So just wanted to make that point.
Yes, Commissioner Johnson?
So the question from the public was, what's going to happen? So if you, Lisa, would explain to the public, so current zoning entitlement to proposed zone change entitlement, and then what's going to happen, what's the difference might be?
So the existing zoning on the property is R-ten, which is one and two-family residential. That generally means that it allows single-family or duplexes, two-family. Two-family within Nashville can be attached or detached. Both of the lots are likely large enough that they could be subdivided. And so where you have two lots, you may, could end up with four lots, per the subdivision regulations, depending on how that was subdivided. If one lot came in and was subdivided into two, and each of those lots is eligible for a duplex, then you could end up with four units where one sits today. Same on the other. If they were subdivided sort of separately, then I think that they're large enough that you could subdivide them and then, and then likely get two duplexes on each. If that was to happen, then you may be looking at situations where you have, NDOT would have to look at the access, but if they're individual lots, it may end up that you had two driveways, sort of one for each set of two. All of that would have to be reviewed with the subdivision regulation, it's all sort of hypothetical. If rezoned to RM-nine A and S, that permits multifamily residential at a maximum density of nine units per acre. Based on the size, that would permit ten units. So not super far off potentially from what is permitted now. I think the calculations that we did in the, in the report assumed that both lots came in together for one subdivision, so that would limit it to one duplex lot. But if they were subdivided separately, then that same limitation would not be placed. And so the proposed zoning permit ten units, multifamily. Multifamily means more than three units on a lot, but it does not necessarily always equate to sort of a stacked flat-type building that you might think about generally with multifamily. We're seeing sort of a lot more, especially in configurations like this, where you might have more of a cottage-style development, where you have detached, sort of smaller multifamily, all within one lot. So this zoning would permit ten units. It would not permit short-term rentals. That's what the NS at the end of the zoning means, is that it would prohibit all types of short-term rentals. It also, the RM-nine A would limit height more than the R-ten does. So it's, it's more restrictive in regards to the height than what's currently permitted.
Well, thank you so much. Great information. Hopefully, it will help what will come, because it is a strict zoning, you know, unlike SP, we won't know until building permit application is submitted, what kind of, you know, style will come. But, so as far as zone change request, based on the community policy, I think it's appropriate.
Any further comments? If not, I will entertain a motion if someone is so inclined.
I'll move approval of the staff recommendation.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. That concludes the majority of our meeting. I forgot to remember the order that... We don't... Can you, would you mind Lisa sending a staff member to go and chat, anybody on the team?
Yes, and, and, yes.
But we have to continue our hearing. Okay. Yes. Okay, our first item is the, our next item is the Historic Zoning Commission Report.
No report this evening.
No report this evening, okay. Board of Parks and Rec, Commissioner Henley, have you gotten to go to a meeting yet?
So I had my first board meeting earlier this week. So happy to represent my fellow commissioners there.
Thank you.
It was a little shorter than this one, just by a tad. But no, enjoying being able to serve there, I think was a great start to hopefully a position where I can be seen as a conduit between both of our departments, and I look forward to it.
Well, thank you for doing it. I don't think we have anything from the Executive Committee report, Director, anything.
Thank you all for your service. We are almost to the end of the term in our processing of applications and the six, I keep talking about the six pounds, trying to get into a one-pound hole. That is what it feels like, but Lisa and her team have been doing a wonderful job, so thank you. We are going through the budget process. I will bring you any updates on that. Thank you to Commissioner Blackshear for continuing to help us. I know that there was news articles written about the commission's attendance, and that's always a little bit uncomfortable. But what I would just say is, we're really grateful you are volunteers, and you serve as volunteers, and we're grateful to you. And we are working on the two, we mean, meaning the administration and the Planning Department are working towards getting the two new commissioners through the council review process, and that's going on, and our eyes are on that very carefully. And then last but not least, I did want to reassure the commission, because you had a comment. We, Commissioner, Commissioner Withers and I discussed this, we did have a request for Commissioner to recuse himself from the item that was heard. I consulted with legal, just wanted to reassure all of you that there was absolutely no reason under our ethical standards for Councilman Withers to recuse himself. We, very routinely, we will always have a rep from council, and therefore, we will likely always have cases under that representative in that district, and has been our practice for many, many years, that council member is able to opine on cases in his or her, in their district. And so, all that's to say, wanted you to know, I had already received that request, and I had responded to it. And other than that, thank you. Go forth and enjoy your evening, and I appreciate, again, all of your hard work.
Thank you, Director. Okay, last but not least is Councilman Withers.
I'm nowhere for it, let's go home.
Okay. Sounds great. Well, then, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Good evening.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.